Evening, everybody. This is the Wellington Board of Education meeting on Tuesdays at 10:00, 2024. We are calling the meeting to order at 7:02 P. M., and we invite you to join us for the pledge allegiance to start up. I pledge to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is in our nation under God, in this school, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we are going to now hear from our student representatives, the Hall and School students, and think of prepared some things.
Yeah, so we have a quirky order tonight just because we have presentations and things. Center School just identified their four reps, so they'll have it been prepared, and all schools is actually very short tonight, so I am just gonna share it. Oh, I knew I'd do that. Let me try that again. As soon as you click off, that goes away, so I didn't have to download it. My apologies. Did it again. It's a big file.
That's tabbed a lot of rassle going down, so if it's too short.
That's the idea.
On August 28th, Hall and Center School had their meet and greet. The students met their teachers for the upcoming year, and the fifth graders got to see around their new school. Families and students were enthusiastic to see their new teachers and even more excited to see their old ones.
Cross-country and both boys and girls soccer had trial slot this week. It will be starting this week. The first meet for cross-country will be on Wednesday at Manchester Middle School. Both soccer teams will have their first game on Wednesday against Stafford with the boys away and the girls at home.
On August 29th, all students of Wellington went back to school after a nice and relaxing summer break. Teachers got to know their new classes and went over rules and expectations for this year. At the end of the day, we had an assembly where a motivational speaker came and talked to us about following our dreams and never giving up. His main motto was "I'm possible" instead of "impossible."
Clubs will be starting at the beginning of October with drama, jazz band, and art clubs. Um, the other clubs will be decided by the students of the school with other ideas like pep band.
Thank you and have a great night. Falcons out!
Yes.
Thank you, Hall and School representatives. We look forward to hearing more from them next month, as well as our new CES representatives, which is great. All right, um, agenda item four is a presentation update from Q A M, and I see we've got Rusty with us tonight. Hi.
Good evening.
So Rusty and I worked on your feedback from last time. He's got, you have the full presentation with updates in it, and what he's gonna just go through tonight is just the update. He's not in full presentation. All right. Rusty, do you want me to share or do you wanna share?
If I share, then I can scroll through easier.
Yeah, perfect. You should be able to go. There we go.
Okay, so I'm going to scroll through to really the, the, the issue that was discussed at the last meeting, which had to do with how does phasing fit into this entire renovation process? And how would we provide swing space for, for the students while construction is underway? We had talked about two options. One would be to try and see if we can bring in portable classrooms, and then the other would be to try to find swing space within the buildings. So this first one that we're gonna go through is a phasing plan that, that starts at Center School. And as you can see up here, we, what we did is we looked at the enrollment as to which, where, what the student count is each year, and then what this, the classroom needs would be at, at, at that point. Uh, so this is anticipating a 25, uh, June 25 state grant application for whatever project it is, uh, but that's when the application would be made. The funds would be available in '26, but it anticipates that you would go through, once it's all approved, you go through a design process in the '25, '26 school year in order to get the ground running when the state funds are available. So just bear with me, I'm getting over a cold, so I'll, I sometimes will lose my, uh, my breath here as I'm, I'm speaking, so, um, you know, I, I just want you to be aware of that. So we started with, with Center School, and the idea, this, the thought process was how, where can we put the students? So we started by saying, okay, if we moved two grades out of Center School, in this case, third and fourth grade, and, and placed them at, at Hall, how we would then be able to generate enough classroom swing space to be able to start the renovation process? So that's the, uh, uh, the premise behind this, uh, this phasing plan. So you can see that the same color is, is really phase one. And what's happening is that area is being taken over for renovations, while the rest of the school is still functioning. So what will happen is the construction staging will be set up on the right side of the north parking lot. And this area will be renovated. So phase one would potentially start in June of 2026 and go through December of 2026. And what I'm showing here are that we would be renovating the space for pre-K through first grade. So that when this renovation is complete, and students that are here in pre-K through first would move into this area of the school, and then they wouldn't have to move again after that. So that would be phase one, and it would also include putting an elevator in and making the building accessible internally. Now, I should say that this phasing plan is really based around a, a renovator's new project, because when you look at phasing with the priority-based, it becomes so complicated, your phases, you would have to repeat the similar strategy for phasing, uh, again and again. So this is to demonstrate how we could do it, uh, as a, a larger scale, a larger project, or it could be done with just the priority items identified, and only that work is done. But the problem is, once you get done with phase one, you would then come back and do phase two work, which would really complicate and, and elongate the overall timeframe. So in this case, we're renovating these classrooms. That's phase one. And then when phase one is complete, uh, the students move in here, the third and fourth graders are still at Hall, and then we renovate these classrooms to the south side. Uh, and then that, you, you notice is happening between January 27 and June 27. So roughly, uh, five to six month period for each of these spaces. Once that work is done, now the students can, and what's, what's happening is the blue represents areas that are being, that have been renovated. The salmon color is for areas that have been under construction, and white is a space that's currently existing. So the core spaces here are still, uh, existing as, as they are, although keep in mind because this involves mechanical upgrades, et cetera, that lower level boiler room will be under some kind of renovation all the way through this process. And it's quite likely that, that they would be hallways, that would be, the ceilings would be out so that and we could bring the necessary infrastructure over to the areas that are being renovated. So the next phase is now that the classrooms are done, then we'd have a phase from September 27 to December 27, or, uh, where the art rooms are and some of the classrooms are, especially the, the space under the gym. Once that work is done, then the next phase is to, what, what we call in phase four from January 28 to August of 28, where the, where the gym, cafeteria, the administrative areas would be renovated, and this work would be done second shift. The other work would be done in a way that they could access the building during the day, uh, and, and sort of segregate construction, but this is internal to the, uh, to the building. So what we would probably do is take advantage of the summer months to whatever degree possible. So for instance, the cafeteria, uh, maybe the admin area, this would be done, uh, in the June to August timeframe, whereas the rest of it would be done maybe in the January to the June timeframe. So that would, uh, that's how we would look it out. And so, and, and this is demonstrating the site. So this is that first phase, where we're renovating this area for the PK K1 classrooms. Uh, and then the second phase is in, in white, and then, uh, the, the third, uh, phase really is that central portion. You can see the, the red represents phase three. So it, it's a fairly extensive process. It's going from 26, uh, June to August of, of, uh, 28. So once this work is done under this scenario, then we're gonna, I'm gonna come back to the, to the budget. I, I guess we can, I, I think we should go first through the phasing, uh, and then come back to the budgets. So now we're going to fall. And, and now keep in mind that we, we've renovated all of Center School at this point. Uh, and what will happen is, at this point, we will bring the fifth graders back and, and to Center School, and, and there's some spaces will be, uh, assigned for fifth grade. So in this case, we're saying the lower level classroom, this classroom here, and then the art room would become spaces for the fifth graders. So now the fifth grade is out of Hall, the fourth and third grade are back in Center School, and we start the renovation process at Hall. So you can see how we've got sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students right here on level, what I'm calling level to the middle level. Uh, and we're gonna take all of that, the upper level, and renovate that. That'll start now. It'll overlap with the, with the Center School renovation, because as long as we're comfortable that Center School's gonna be done in a timely fashion, they can start here in June and go through December. The important thing is, because we would be dealing with hazmat, we do wanna do all that work in the summer months, because you don't want to do any hazmat removal during the, the occup, while the school is occupied by students. So January 28 to December 28, that upper level will be renovated, and again, I'm identifying that the boiler room, which is down here, will be renovated all the way through this timeframe. So that'll be phase one. Then when that work is complete, what will happen is the sixth graders, seventh and eighth graders will remain where they are. The sixth graders will move into the renovated area, and that can, that can change depending on what the preference is at the time. But the idea is that that space is done, and now we start renovating right here to the north side, uh, and it's a vertical renovation, so you can see these spaces will be renovated, as well as the stage and music spaces down below. So that'll be phase two. That'll go from January 29 to August 2029. The next phase, uh, is, is going to be okay, um, the, the next phase, because this, there's an overlap here, I should say, that, that we're gonna take in the summer of 2029, we are going to take the band area and these two spaces, the science labs up here, and also renovate them. So although the start time will be different, this phase 1A, or 2A rather, will start in, in January of '29 and finish in August of '29. Uh, phase 2B will start in June of '29 and also finish in August of '29. When that's done, now what we have is we, you can see all the areas in blue, that's where, uh, those are all renovated, and we would start renovating the, the classrooms on the second level right there. That's phase three. We'll start in August, go all the way through, through December. So in all, in each of these cases, there's adequate classrooms for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So whereas they're moving around a little bit, uh, the, the bottom line is there's space there, and you're doing this all internally. Once that work is completed, then the last phase is that core area, which is the cafeteria and, and the gymnasium. More than likely, the gym space will be done first, because the cafeteria is, is sort of an internal core area, and that would be done in the summer month of 20, uh, 2030. So this goes from January 2030 to August of 2030. So now you've got a four-year window where you've been renovating all the schools in this scenario. So that, that's the, uh, sequence of construction that could be implemented. At the end of these four years, you're, you fully renovated all the schools, and, and now the students can come back into their, uh, into their classroom spaces, and we should, we should be, you know, at a point of, of completion with the project. Uh, I'm gonna jump back to Center School and the estimate. So what we did is, based on that phasing criteria, we updated the construction budget, the hard costs, uh, and, and the project development cost, contingencies and so on, and ultimately, the Center School projects at about 39.83 million total project cost, estimated state reimbursement of 24.1, 0.19, and then the net cost is about 15.64. Now, I did develop a column for the capital priority projects, that, I'm cutting them capital projects for priority-based projects. And because we, those are done in a way that, that's not, uh, very sequentially broken out, we've added a factor of safety to that to say, I'm not sure exactly, uh, when certain portions of that work could be done, how it would be implemented. There will probably be areas where you would have to go back and undo work that's done, uh, from the prior phase, just to, because that's the extent of the work that had to be done, and you had to leave it in an occupyable condition. But this budget represents, uh, the capital, uh, projects and a priority-based approach, and anticipates that it's gonna actually extend out further in terms of the timeframe. The project development and contingencies are, are factors from, from this total project cost. So you can see that the project cost is about $5 million higher in terms of the construction costs. But what also happens in, in this scenario is we're anticipating lower reimbursement, because it's not being applied for as one renovator's new project, it's being applied for multiple smaller, uh, scale projects that, in some cases, will, uh, eliminate the reimbursement of some work that will need to be done uh, in the school. And the level of completion between the priority-based projects and the renovation, and this, because new projects will be different, and it'll be no, certainly different, because we won't do certain things that will be, we'll be obligated to do in, in the renovator's new. So the, the net impact is you have a low reimbursement, a slightly higher cost, and therefore the net to, to the town is higher in this scenario. We also looked at, uh, what would happen if you were to build a new building on any one of the sites, whether it's the Hall site or, or the, uh, the Center School site, Hall being the more likely. And just to give you a perspective of what that would be, uh, that's based on a 65,000, almost 66,000 gross square foot building, uh, and the estimates, and then this work would start in, uh, at the same time, for instance, in June of 2026. Uh, there's no phasing cost, because the students would just continue to work, uh, to, to occupy their, their classrooms where they currently are. So there's, uh, some savings there, but it's a larger cost in terms of the overall project. But this is now pre-K eight building on the Hall site, just to give you a perspective on it, this project development cost, and then there's owners contingencies. The total project cost is, is, uh, 87.89 in this scenario. The reimbursement rate, uh, is 10% less. However, uh, what we have been seeing is that, uh, districts are getting, and when we demonstrate that you're building new, but it makes sense, and the state is, is granting full reimbursement, if you make your case to them that it makes sense, uh, to do this, you will end up having, you know, even though the, the net dollars would be similar to what you would have paid for, uh, for, for renovation, the building itself will be now a new building, and you're not dealing with unknown conditions that could, could come up. So uh, so basing, basing on that, we're, uh, we're looking at a, a project cost of 34.51 million, again, the June 2026 start. And that means that project would be completed by June or August of 2028. It's a two-year, uh, construction period. And you used to, but you still have to resolve. I did carry, uh, dollars for demolition of parts of the school, let's say, uh, if it's Hall, that maybe you don't need all that space, and some of the, the spaces that are in, in, in bad condition, you could, you could, uh, demolish. But that would be a discussion, so I'm just as an allowance here for, for that, uh, part of the project. Uh, it's again, to give you perspectives to what the cost is from, for each of these approaches. Uh, jumping now to the budgets that would, uh, be it for for Hall, uh, so similar approach, um, again, identifying what the renovation as new cost would be based on the the construction and, uh, phasing that we looked at, the project development cost. So here, the total project cost, uh, for renovators new is 15.38. Uh, the estimated reimbursement is 30.65 with a net cost of 19.73, 19.73 million, uh, to the town. Uh, comparing it to the capital, uh, priority-based project, it's, the cost is slightly uh, and, and the reimbursement is lower. Uh, so there, the net cost is about, uh, 28 million, uh, to, to the town. In the case of a renovation, uh, renovator's new project, it is easier to get the space to end favor. You do have any, any part of the building that was built in 1959, um, and, and earlier does get a, uh, an increase for, uh, square footage, so you will get some advantage of that in the renovator's new scenario. Not, uh, that's gonna be less likely in the, uh, priority-based, uh, capital project, uh, as, as defined here. So so that cost is actually, you know, uh, uh, almost $9 million higher than the renovator's new project. Uh, and then, of course, this is the same, uh, in terms of a, a new building. And what I did do is I added the cost of the two renovator's new projects, uh, this 19 million, and also the, the cost for, for Center School, and that's a total of 35.37 million. So it just gives you a perspective. If you renovate both schools as new, uh, the cost is 30, you know, 34.5 compared to 35.7. So the delta is not that great between those two options. Uh, but there are, uh, greater unknowns, uh, that one could run into, and the reality is that there's quite a bit of disruption in a renovation project, uh, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and uh, and so the, the difference here is one is gonna be done in by 2028, uh, the other ones are going to be done, one building would be done, the eighth of the, uh, second building would be done by 30. Now, uh, having done all that, I know that there was some discussion about portable classrooms, and it makes sense. So I did do an analysis of how we could, uh, look at portable classrooms as well. So I'm gonna go to these diagrams and say, okay, if we were to bring in eight portable classrooms and locate them behind, in terms of New York Center School, and the idea is you still need a connection to the existing building. So these eight portable classrooms would house, uh, you know, eight, eight classrooms. So in, in essence, where the first phase under the other renovation scenario, you're renovating this side of the building, and these students would be here, these, the third and fourth graders would still move to, to Hall, while these, this first pre-K through second would move into the portables, allowing us to renovate all the classrooms that first year. So between June of 2026 to June of 27, all those classrooms would be done, and the goal would also be to, to do that administrative and cafeteria in the summer of, of 2020, uh, uh, seven. That should be uh, yeah, this should be 27 here. Oops. So that allows us to have, um, uh, you know, that entire area done, and which also means the students can move back into it in, in the 27, 28 school year. And the advantage of that is, is that once that's done, even though there's still renovation going on in that, in the core area, those students can move back and eventually, the, uh, the fifth and sixth graders could move here into the portable building, allowing us, you know, to start construction at Hall a, a year earlier. So that's the advantage there, and also, so those students would stay in the portables for, for two years, and and, and what would happen is we put together a phasing plan for, for Hall, where you can see we're taking larger chunks of the building and renovating them, because you've really got seventh and eighth grade in that building. You still have to be cognizant of how students are exiting the building, how they're getting to all their program spaces. So that's all considered in this renovation process. But ultimately, all this work is done, uh, all the renovations are done, because the portables are used as swing space as well. Uh, it, it, it allows you to be done by 2029, so you basically save about a year in time on this. Now, what does happen, uh, is that ultimately, when, if you use this approach, you know, portables are not inexpensive. You would probably need the portables throughout that timeframe, potentially, uh, not just for classrooms, but might maybe for, you know, uh, art or music or something like that. Uh, but in essence, at least two and a half years, you need the portable is more likely between two and a half and three. And so that cost gets factored into, uh, into the overall budget. And ultimately, when we look at this, and I'm gonna go here, what I found is that between a cost, the cost of having the portables there and leaving them at Center School for that window, so the, the cost, there's three things that impact the cost. One is the initial setup, uh, you know, all the, the site work that needs to be done, et cetera. The second is this, it's a monthly lease cost. Uh, and then the third is the, uh, dismantling of everything and removing it. So, you know, what we anticipate that that cost would be around a million and a quarter to probably a million and six. Um, but by doing that in this particular case, um, you're able to save a year of time, uh, which time is money, so that escalation cost, uh, all of that, you know, giving larger spaces, adding larger spaces available for renovation allows more efficiency in the work. And so the net result I found was that there's about a, a little over a half million dollars in savings there, uh, using the portables. Now, this would need to be studied in more detail, uh, but this is the, the initial finding, I'm making certain assumptions. Uh, and, but, uh, what it's doing is it's allowing you to complete all the projects, uh, in, in a more timely fashion, by saving a year. So it's actually, you, between the two schools, you'll be done by 2029. Uh and in twenty twenty eight or the end of twenty eight, I'm saying twenty nine only because it's, we're saying, looking at potentially December. Of twenty twenty eights of the occupants who would be sometime in twenty twenty nine. Now, as is the case with renovation projects, uh they're complicated, there's a lot of things that can go wrong. And when something goes wrong and the school is occupied, you really have to then. Look at what that timeline impact is going to be, because there's certain activities that can't be done during the regular school year. And at in particular hazmat, and so that throws uh uh you know, a complication in there, so. I I think more than likely, these scenarios would be uh June of twenty twenty, uh you know, or August of twenty twenty nine. So rather, you know, uh in terms of full occupancy, anticipating that uh something would have gone wrong. In in this process and uh you know, so giving ourselves six months of uh sort of. Uh time for potential problems in the long run. So uh that's an overview of uh how you can phase this project. And if you have any questions, I can certainly respond to them at this point.
I, um Rusty, when you talked about the um the renovated new, at well. Rebuild at all, right, the pre K through eight?
Yeah.
And that's again at about sixty five, sixty six million. Um if we were to go back and look at our new school plan, which would alleviate. All of this, having to move everybody around and portables and. Everybody could stay just where they are until the new school is done and then move. Would those numbers be comparable? I mean, I know we've already experienced one or two years of increase. Due to time, you know, time having gone by, but would they be comparable to that um? Number for, and we would also alleviate that problem of something will probably go wrong. And not being able to work in the buildings because there's hazardous materials and. We could alleviate a lot of those problems, but would it be comparable?
Yeah, that's what the the last column is all about, is if you were to, in this scenario though, what I did is I didn't go to a new site. Uh I just said you would build on the hall school site, when we're doing several projects right now, we're building. A new building on an existing site, I I understand. And having been involved in the the new school uh approach on a new site, there was a lot more work because. It's a it's a brand new site, you have to bring in utilities, there's a lot of work that's involved, uh so. I didn't go there, but I said if you were to accept the hall site as uh one where you would build, where you could potentially build that in the in in towards the fields. Then that makes it more uh comparable in the sense that you can see that the net cost. Is similar to that of a uh and renovate is new for both schools. But you haven't gone through any of the disruption, you know, because that that new building is far enough away from. Yeah, it's on the same site, but you provide separate access and we're doing that at several schools currently, where there's. And they're separated, uh you know, the the greatest compromise is. Where you're placing the building and usually it's, you know, there's some fields there, and so the compromise that you might, your athletic program may be compromised. In this case, the hall site is also not as large, so when you end the project and you keep a part of the hall. You um you you would have uh you know, less space for athletic fields, because now you'll have. Two buildings on that site, unless you determine, you you know, you decide, let's just tear that entire building down. But it it will be somewhat limited, but I I try to use. Uh the hall site, not knowing where you would go to at this point for a new site.
Would we meet the state recommendations and requirements for um? Adequate space for especially for the eighth grades, you know, the middle school. Students.
So, I mean, they have guidelines, but you know, you can, I mean, there, that's what there are guidelines, you won't be penalized by the state. If you didn't need that, all that criteria. Uh you would have to discuss it with them, uh ultimately, there are communities that uh end up. You know, facing the buildings on the same site, understanding that there may not be as much space for athletic. Uh athletic programs as you would like, um so that, you know, that's a compromise um in that regard.
Yeah, thank you.
Rusty, can we go back to the center?
I just stopped your sharing.
That's fine, right, that's something, we can later, we have the presentation. So on the initial center phasing plan, you've got. The anticipation for three first grade classroom, but there's only two that have moved. Did you read read that, is one of them like going into the media center or something?
Um, one second.
But only at the not, no, that's the renovator part, I'm looking at where they're gonna be moved to in the non-renovation part, and there's only two first grade classrooms, he's answered okay, not three.
So in in, is this the one you're referring to, or?
Share it again, Rusty, sorry, I I stopped the sharing so we could see you, share it again for us, please.
Okay.
So we know we're on the same one. And I I can probably answer some of this part, because we were identifying spaces. And part of this is not knowing whether you're gonna have two sections of kindergarten coming in or three.
Right.
So looking at the max, the spaces that we were looking at, where could we fit them in if that was the case, and right now in that first phasing. Uh where he has, can you go back um to the very first one? I think that's what you're looking at. This one here is you still have the art room.
Right.
And the library as an as a space, if you had three sections, it came in three sections.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that that was accounted for and just wasn't overlooked.
Yeah, in this scenario, I've got three seconds and and two firsts. Um uh and it could be the opposite, so ultimately, I think we were trying to achieve that fifteen classroom count. Overall.
And that's why two grade levels went over in that one.
And that was grade level, it's been staying at Hall throughout the duration of the center project, right?
Right.
Yes.
So for the on the budget page, um for the new pre K through eight building on Hall site. You have the total project cost at eighty seven point eight nine million.
Yes.
My question is, is. When we had the, and I'm sure it's not apples to apples, but when we had the new school project for the referendum. That total project was plus or minus twenty million less than you're projecting now. Can you give a little bit of an explanation to that, is that because you're factoring in demo of all? But then we don't have to buy the land, can you just explain a little bit, like obviously there's a bunch of nitty gritty line items within that, but. Twenty million in one year ish seems like.
I I thought the number was slightly higher than sixty some million for net costs, because.
Go ahead, sorry.
So what what I was doing i- is looking at. At sixty five thousand, you know, I just was trying to get the allowable square footage in there. And I was using current uh dollar values and then, of course, escalating them for two years out. Um.
I remember all the numbers off the top of my head, so I'm probably true, but you understand my question?
Yeah, and 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 so. What he did here for the square footage for the six, the sixty five thousand eight sixty four is not your head spec. He did this so that to max out based upon your projected enrollment. How you can maximize reimbursement, and that's the size of the building you could get, if you did a space waiver, you could get more square footage. The square footage for the building that was proposed, or the pre K through eighth grade building was closer to ninety thousand square feet, so this is low. Compared to what was proposed.
Right, but the number, is the number higher, if that's what my question is?
The number that was, yes, and so the, just in all the escalations for all the building costs. Are all skyrocketing.
Twenty by twenty million dollars?
It's a lot.
Really?
And because what he did with this was, Rusty, and Rusty, you can tell me if I'm wrong. But the way I understand what he did is current buildings that are happening right now, he took their square footage. And multiplied it by the square foot cost of what it was costing today, they're not putting in gold railings, they're not doing those things. It's just the average per square foot cost times the square footage of the sixty five thousand, that's where he's getting the number, Rusty, correct?
That's correct.
I'm just using.
I mean, there are other, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, I was trying to tell you to go.
No, so the overall, I mean, a big part of it also becomes, what are we doing with the existing building and how much are we uh demolishing? Uh what are we doing with the site and the complications of the site? So that adds into the the cost here.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wanted a little bit more clarity because you're using it as a comparison. That I can see it being slightly confusing because the. The total cost that you're projecting for the cost to our town in comparison to renovating our current schools. You're using that as a delta, and I could see myself included. Cause I can't keep all these numbers in my mind, comparing it to. I can see it easily becoming a point of contention of like, well, we should have done this in the past, but it's not the same. We're not looking at the same project.
Right.
Which could be confusing to some people, that's just why I'm trying to. I don't have a problem with it, I like seeing this comparison, I'm just saying that it's different than what was brought to referendum.
Yeah, Rusty, I think what.
You know what I'm trying to say?
What Santa's saying is, if we took um what went to referendum, we took the same square footage, we factored in the. Cost for, you know, clearing land, utilities, all that business. We probably could put in a fourth column here if we wanted to and put another number in, and it's gonna be. Closer to the ed spec of closer to ninety thousand square feet, it doesn't mean you're gonna get it, you couldn't rely on the space waiver. And it's going to cost you fifty five billion dollars.
I just don't want someone who doesn't have time to sit and listen to all this to look at this and be like, oh, wow, it's big, you know what I mean, because it's not really the same.
I think that.
Appreciate it as a column, I'm just pointing out that it's not the same.
I think that column was added last and and really the reason uh Rusty took the phasing piece here, that's really important, is the first two. The comparison, you're looking for renovate to new for both center school and hall school totals to be thirty five point three seven million, thirty five million dollars. And if we did our approach of the C I P, pick your projects off, you're looking at fifty five million, that is a twenty million dollar difference.
Yes.
If we just, and that, I think that is the, really what we should be looking at. In the grand scheme of things, the reason why the new is is an important thing to consider is because. If you go to the state with a renovate to new project and it is cheaper to build new, they're gonna call you on it, and they're gonna say. We're not gonna, uh we're not gonna support this because it's cheaper to build new. It might not be in this example.
Right, and I understand that, I and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I'm just saying that, um. That possibility for the land, I mean, that ship could have been sailed, you know what I mean, like, so maybe it's not this, an option anymore to do what. We wanted to do or what some people wanted to do.
Even if it was.
I just wanted to say that. I'm trying to think of how to, I wanna put it in words, give you a second, um. These numbers are quite compelling, and they're going to be compelling to a lot of people who only have time to look at this one page.
Yeah.
Cause we're not, we're saying, okay, sixty five, eight, sixty four, that wasn't our ed spec.
Right.
And according to you and many other people on the S B C, the ed spec was what we needed, we have no issue with that. And we're looking at an additional twenty five thousand square feet.
Agreed.
So if you're using this number of thirty four and a half million dollars of the cost of a town. As something that's twenty five percent less square feet than we need, that's not really fair. For the average town person to look at and be like, oh, well, let's, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think adding a fourth column.
Yeah.
Which easily we could add to this piece.
My brain is just like.
We have, that's the comparison, the comparison he's got there is something that we didn't do at the S B C.
Right.
Because the ed spec was higher, he's maintaining that number based upon the enrollment. It's easy to add a fourth column, I think, in my opinion, um to just get.
That's what I would personally like to see, because that's what I've been wanting.
Comparing to.
I wanna see, you know, and I know that it's it's a lot of work and I appreciate all the work that went into doing all this, but I wanna see, like, if I'm gonna buy a new car. That's not that, you know, obviously it's millions of dollars, but do I, should I buy a new car, or should I keep dumping money into the old car, I have to see. The actual comparison, you know what I mean, that's what I'm looking for, and I don't think that this is accurate comparison right now.
I think we should add a column to for, um are those numbers were sixty million without an auditory amount, sixty five million with an uh sixty six.
Which are outdated now.
But of course, it's gone up over those two years, probably closer to that eighty seven number. But I think if we could have that fourth or fifth column, that would, what would it cost to build this school, is that what you're suggesting, Sandy?
I wanna see this, yeah, I wanna see this number based on, because it's already twenty million higher and it's it's. Twenty five percent less square footage than what you guys said we needed, if not more.
Right.
So it's gonna be even higher than that, so the delta is going to change.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, like, not, but just the facts of what the numbers are.
I mean, column three, isn't it a lot useful to us, because it's too small for those needs of the students? Is that true?
Correct, again, he's he's cheap, put that in there though, just to give you a picture of the comparison to the other two.
Right.
Based upon the square footage that we could get, the same reimbursement. Because the capital rental priority based projects, you're not gonna get sixty three percent reimbursement.
Right, cause you don't get it for the labor, you get it for the windows, but.
And you don't get, a lot of projects won't qualify, when you do the rental as new, everything qualifies under that for the most part, under that sixty three percent. So I think it 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 would be as easy as adding that fourth column, just so you have the referendum comparison. But realistically, I think this, the point of this task was really to look at, okay, how do we prioritize projects? We tried to do that, and basically what Rusty is telling us with his study here is what we're proposing is gonna cost fifty five million. What he's proposing is renovate to new is gonna cost three thirty five million. The idea that um. I think the new school piece of this is just a quick comparison and it might not be more, it might not be less. But the point is, you need to know when you walk to C I P. Why you should be proposing a renovate to new, in my opinion, compared to twenty million dollars more for. Pick your projects and where you're going to walk over the same projects, and you're gonna tear things up that you've already done, that's his point.
So one of the things that the state does require, and that's why I put this together, is a comparison to a new building. Uh that's within the space standards, so you can't say we're gonna compare it to a building that's. Higher than the space standards, which is what your other building was, uh because that was based in ed spec, and that's not, there's nothing wrong with that, but it's. But their formula is, we want a comparison of your renovation projects to a building. That meets the space standards and is budgeted based on the space standards, and that's how they evaluate. Uh giving you the renovator's new uh status, because. You know, they don't want you just going for the renovator's new status, uh even here, one of the things we have to look at is how much. The existing build, they have big, the existing buildings are over your space standard. The only advantage you have is that that they're all, there's large portions that are nineteen fifty nine and earlier. Which then gets you a twenty five percent boost in square footage. Uh and you still probably need to get some level of a a space standard waiver.
Right.
The other consideration is when we talk about new, it's furnished, every everything's new inside. And it's meeting those aspects that we um planned. And it's meeting those aspects that we um planned. Whereas I think renovate as new is strictly the building. Is that correct, Rusty? You don't get anything inside just the building?
No, actually, on the renovator's new, you can get new furnishings if you so choose. I didn't uh factor a lot in for furnishings.
Okay.
I I did put some money in there for furnishings, but not 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 a tremendous amount. So it's pretty comprehensive in terms of the the two, in terms of comparison.
And that was part of the um referendum proposal with including all of those. This is the merger, it is it is required. If you build brand new brands, brand new site, you have to purchase all new things. Um I guess, you know, codes and whatever. That was part of it. It was disappointing to hear for sure. Because why I have perfectly great tables, can't wait to take them with us, but I think that was part of the spiel, so that was all included in the um referendum proposal.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm just saying that to correct Ann, his numbers here are not to your specs.
Correct. No, you're right. You're absolutely correct.
So it's different.
Yeah, that's also, although um the Hall Foundation owns that building, so. Let's not forget that we need to, we're gonna need to communicate with them at some point again. If we're going to go past a certain point of changing things about that building.
So just while Rusty's here, I I'll listen to some other questions. Um you would also ask me to. Look at one of the schools in Mansfield that had closed. And it's been turned over to town and the response from the state was if you are going to use that school, you could use it as a as a site. But you'd have to bring it to school safety requirements. I don't think the town is gonna support you spending millions of dollars on a building in Mansfield to move your kids into it. Uh unless it was cheaper than portables if you're going to do that route. Uh and from what I understand, water and septic are two big thing issues at Goodwin. Uh I think you can say you're probably gonna spend that and those two things right there alone, so. The goal was to get to this point for you um and then do a full public presentation. Um we're looking at right now October ninth and tenth. Um I'd say and because uh we have put out a communication to um. State reps and senators. Because if they can help us get a better reimbursement rate and if they have a better understanding of where we're at and what we're trying to accomplish. And how expensive it is, um that would be helpful. So uh. That that communication's gone out. I already have the one person that's communicated back and said they could do both dates. So that's why we, it's either the ninth or tenth. Rusty's got that as a hold. Uh I think the idea and we're trying to avoid all of the meetings that are going on, which is not very easy. Um but it it will probably be one of those two nights uh with a thought of doing a full presentation at a hall school. Or something like that, big enough that where if a lot of people wanna show up, they can um and then. You go from there and figure out what people are willing to support completely, but you've got numbers to at least figure that out. We can add, I think that I can work with Rusty and Rusty, I think we could add a fourth column very fast there.
Yes.
Can we clarify this fourth column? Are you asking for what was proposed at referendum to be in that column? Do you want, like, so my question is, do you want that column to represent the comparison of what was voted on? Or do you want that column to represent, because the reason I'm asking is because if if. That number for the hall site was just taken simply by square footage multiplied by cost. I can guarantee you that the number that went to referendum, if you take the ninety thousand or whatever it is and multiply it by the same number, it's going to be. Significantly higher than what went to referendum.
Oh.
And what I don't want is the comparison of people looking at it going, oh, why, you know, this was the referendum number. It's not that bad. Why didn't we do it and get the referendum number now, which is significantly higher? So I would. I would say you either do two more columns or you do one at the current price. The old specs at the current price.
Right, what what my point was is that. My understanding of this page is comparing the different options renovate as new to the capital budgets or what if we did a new. Pre K through eight building, right? So the people are gonna look at this. I'm already looking at it when he said, okay, the. You you can already tell that it's gonna be higher, cause like I said, this is based off of sixty five thousand square feet. The ed spec was ninety and this is already twenty million more than. Missing that extra twenty five thousand square feet, you know what I mean? So, but. I guess my point was that people are gonna look at this and be like, oh, look, we could be building new. I feel like I'm rambling, but yeah, like my point is that like. The referendum is in the past, that number doesn't matter anymore. The next day that number changed, you know what I mean? So like to put, oh. Back last year in May, we voted on sixty seven thousand or seventy seven million and it failed. I don't care about that number anymore. That number doesn't exist because it's not accurate. I think it should be. If they're just using a factor times square feet based on whatever, it should be that new number because. Is that still an option to, like I said, with the car comparison, like, okay, if we're dumping money into. Repairs versus new, that's where you get the delta from to see what it's worth.
Right, but.
To make an educated decision.
My point was, I didn't, cause you made the point about the average person doesn't have time to watch all of our meetings.
Right.
So let's say the average person looks at that cost breakdown and says. Hey, it says a new school is only gonna, it's gonna actually be less money to build a new school. Didn't we go through this vote? Why didn't we do it?
Right.
So I wanna alleviate that confusion by making sure that column specifies that that number is not what was brought to referendum. That's not what we agreed upon.
Right.
So I that's, I just want that clear.
I mean, it might be nice to have the referendum number just to show the rate of inflation, like, hey, a year ago, it was sixty seven million. Now it's ninety seven, we're correct. You know what I mean? I don't know, but then is it too confusing having all these numbers and people are like, what the heck am I looking at?
I don't wanna comment.
So I don't know. I'm just saying that this is not, I don't think that this is a fair number because it's not.
Information, that's easy.
I don't know.
I mean, I was told.
I don't know if I'm pulling hairs, but.
Right, it's still not as best.
Right, I think for for the for the discussion purposes, um I'm sure someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but the for discussion purposes today, that's based on the hall school site. And then and the the uh what the SBC did was not at all on the whole school site, that there's an opportunity to have more of the square footage. Right. So, I mean, I don't necessarily think it's an unfair comparison because what what we're seeing in front of us is. On the same site, so this is what we could have if we built on the same site. Um that's not necessarily what the town had an appetite for possibly, but that's, I mean. The trajectory makes sense to me, might not have anything to do with anything that the town wants to do, but. Building new on that site, maybe that's all we can do for square footage. But is it fair because it's not even our property? Would the Hall Foundation allow us to demo their building and build something they want something that we don't even own? So is that even, you know what I'm trying to say? Is this even realistic to be like, oh, hey?
And don't.
See, you know what I mean?
Don't forget that that building at sixty thousand square feet only holds four grades. You have to come for five other grades to go in there if you're gonna go to one school. It centers another thirty thousand square feet, so it's like you're trying to cram. K through eight into sixty three thousand square feet, which doesn't seem to be realistic considering that Hall takes up sixty thousand, that's four grades.
Yeah, I don't know.
There were.
I don't know if I'm getting to nitpicky, I'm just.
No, I don't.
To talk about it.
There was renovate and uh there was a renovate and expand addition. Um proposal S or SBC two that had to do with.
Right. But that's not what this is.
Right, so we have so many things that are different.
Right.
Okay, I think that I hear what you're. Now it's not comparable certainly, but I do think people are gonna have questions about that.
Yeah.
So somehow, you know, you have to like consider. That and how do we help people understand like where we've been, where we're at and to me, the fact that this is based on space rather than. The specs that, as you said, we're. Spend a lot of time on and it's no fluff, no nonsense to make it make sense for our kids. Um that's a huge comparison issue for me.
Right.
Because and you know, you can look where do we have our specs? They've gotta be online somewhere, right? Like, so you can go back and review them. Um but that's that's for me to a huge factor.
The other thing is, this was an option. Number three was one of our options. And I believe if I remember correctly, that it was more expensive than my correct vote than the new school. Um when we, when we were gonna renovate, put everybody at Hall, renovate Hall and have put everybody there. I think that was one of our options.
Maybe a little.
Do you remember? I thought it was.
Well, you were you were doing full renovations, the option was full renovations of old buildings and it was it was more than the.
Than the new building, right?
There also, if anybody wants to go back to the school building committee on documents. There were some different markups, drops, like drafts of how to do field space because that was a big problem. Um I think Rusty said that too, some of the athletic space might be compromised. So their bill had put together some documents where it was like overlapping softball and baseball and soccer, like how you can make that all work. Because there's a transportation part of bringing kids to different fields if we have to do it that way. Um so there was just all of that. There's a lot, the whole entire thing.
Right, I just feel like this is incomplete because I personally want to see, okay, well, based on. Cause we, I doubt, right, correct me if I'm wrong, please, that this third column, the new pre K through eight, isn't even really. I understand that he's basing it off of. Because you have to do a comparison to new when you're getting.
Eligible square foot.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but. It's not really accurate because if we were gonna do new, we wouldn't. Do the sixty five, cause it wouldn't fit our ed spec, then we would ask for the waiver, right? That's what you were saying, the square footage waiver.
Right.
So this isn't really a fair number to say that it's a new number. You know what I mean?
Do we have space for nine game?
Yeah.
I I think the whole.
I'm not trying to open the can worm that I feel like I am, but I don't.
I think the whole new perspective that you're thinking about is clouding this up.
Yeah.
Because that ship kinda sailed a little bit.
Okay.
Until you figure out what people are willing to support, which is the point was the first two columns and figuring out what priorities are. When people start hearing, you have, if you spend over two million dollars, you have to bring up this, this, this and this. That's why we did this project, why we we went through this this, you know, process. And right now you should be sharing either renovate to new or the CIP list. And there's a twenty million dollar difference between the two. The next logical conversation to come out of that, I think would be, okay. Now we understand that, is it that much more to build new or not? And we could pull that information. I think that maybe that's the piece, maybe that you just wanna hide that last column. For presentation at this point in time because.
I don't, because this is the information that I was hoping for prior to the referendum. And if it was out there, I'm sorry, I didn't know about it. But this to me is black and white. I want to know, and I'm sure I know a lot of other people in this town. Want to know these three numbers so that we can make an educated decision on how we're spending our money and being good stewards of the tech people. I don't think it's fair to hide the column of new and bring it up a year from now and we keep going back and forth and kicking the can down the road.
Then you should add fourth of the column.
That's what I'm trying to alleviate. I want this all in one conversation so we can look and see what are we doing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
If I could add, you know, the, when we look at these projects, we're not meeting all your educational criteria. In other words. We're renovating these spaces, but we're not tearing down walls and making classrooms bigger because your ad specs call for a slightly larger room. This is a renovation of those existing, within the existing confines and 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 perimeter of the building. We're not adding square footage, we're not wholesale demolishing internal spaces. That's where, how these numbers are developed, uh just to manage the cost. If you start going in the direction of saying. Well, our ed spec calls for. A larger media center, therefore we should tear the wall down and make it slightly larger. I'm just using um a hypothetical situation. That's not what these uh these numbers are based on. The other thing, and also. Your buildings are large. I mean, your existing building being sixty, sixty six thousand, I believe it is. Um and you know, and then uh center is about thirty some thousand, so between the two, you have ninety. Thousand plus square feet, but uh you have a lot of wasted space. Uh so there is a way of uh maybe designing it so you can, you know, be more efficient with the use of space. Regardless, I mean, what I'm trying to get is is you're not meeting all your ed spec needs in the renovator's new criteria here.
I understand that and I wasn't bringing up the ed specs to talk about the reno as new. I wasn't trying to go vogue and design my own school. I was just saying that for the new pre K through eight.
Yeah.
That that's what is comparison of the ed spec, that's all.
So. Bill, you know where.
Yeah.
The rest you're out of.
Yeah, I and I think what we can do is, I mean, we can pull together. The two columns, the cost of where what went to referendum, so it's just as a comparison, it it. It's not really great information because it's an old number.
Could we update the number?
Well, that's what your last column would be. If you, what what your ed spec was, which I think it was actually eighty two thousand square feet, was the actual ed spec. Um and I think that was with a, an auditorium, if I remember correctly. Um. I might be wrong about that, but we can, we can do a, on a new site, what would that look like today? I can tell you that I talked to Peter Dart in Mansfield about this and their building cost, it cost them fifty million and he said we were, we were told if we were gonna do that again today. It would have cost a hundred million, like it has doubled.
That's another point, like comparing it because that just also puts another nail in the coffin of the capital rental project column.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because, okay, now it's twenty six point four, but it's gonna take four years to do both schools, so exponentially. You know, we just got these numbers a year ago and it's, you know what I'm trying to say? You can have.
Still a type of inflation in in little projects, but yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, I I think we have what we need and and um. I can, we can pull together some numbers and just send it out to you and say, is this what you were looking for? And make sure that you kinda look at, get your eyes on it before we put it out into the public.
Yeah.
When do you think you're gonna know the date of that community presentation?
Uh I'm trying to press them to give me an answer by the end of the week, so we have time to pull together flyers and get information out. And make sure that we are.
Advertise that as much as possible. Okay, we have a meeting on the eighth, so that will help us somewhat, but we've.
Yeah, now we will do a marketing piece to try and, and we're trying to intentionally not do this on a night where there's other things going on.
That's good. Well, can we do a resume also?
Uh we'll talk about what that's gonna look like. Cause it was very hard, we can figure that out. I don't know what that's gonna look like. Maybe there is easier to record the presentation, but.
Okay.
People complained about the sound in Hall. Unless you have fifty thousand dollars to pay for sound and picks that and like you're. Okay. Rusty, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll be in touch.
Feel better.
Thank you.
And we keep while we listen.
Ready, you ready over there? Item item number five, fantastic and much anticipated presentation from the London Food Services Program. Representatives for this evening.
And I'm very sorry if you just panicked watching that, like, how are we gonna close the cafeteria? Yeah, how is that gonna work?
You do realize I was I was thinking like.
I knew exactly where you were. That's why I looked. So they pulled together a presentation for us um and and uh.
Alright. Most of you know me, I'm Stephanie Knight, Food Service Director. I brought my, well, we'll get to that slide in a second.
There you go.
Okay, so the overview. That's what we're gonna call you.
You understand stuff?
Yeah, I wanna. This time we're gonna talk about the purpose, facilities, our equipment and stuff, um staff. Where on the C E P program this year, um nutritional nation, breakfast, lunch, food service, no, we never do food service.
Took it out and didn't take that out, my apologies.
And from the school program. Okay. Purpose of the food service department, provide nutritious meals to Wellington students. Full breakfast and lunch is critical to student health and well-being. Helps ensure students have the proper nutrition to learn, children participate in the national school.
Helps ensure students have the proper nutrition to learn. Children who participate in the national school lunch program have. Superior nutritional intakes compared to those that do not participate. Proper nutrition improves behavior, school performance and cognitive development. Partly nourish children or actively participate in education experience. A healthy eating environment teaches children good nutrition and the elements of a proper diet, which can have a positive effect on children's eating habits and physical wellbeing throughout life.
Bottom line, it's important to.
It's important. The future and the future is what I say. Alright. These are photos of the H M S kitchen. I will say that a lot of our equipment is old and we keep it running because um, that's what we do. Uh, our refrigerators are about thirty years old. Our um oven is about thirty years old. We um. I was told by a company to keep our refrigerators running as long as possible so we don't build like them anymore. So. So I fixed one a couple of years ago and it's not gonna look good, Sean. So we did just have to fix the freezer at hall. Um, so. We had a leak in the refrigerant line, so. That was good times yesterday.
Yeah.
We know it's just yesterday, yeah, day seven of school. So, alright, that's H M S kitchen. Here's C E S, C E S kitchen, which is very tiny. Um, and that equipment is also um fairly old. I think. That's what was renovated back in two thousand, that kitchen. So that's about the age of the equipment. Um, minus the refrigerator and warmer, but dishwasher, oven, stuff like that. Alright, and here's the moment we've been waiting for. Team Awesome. Tonight, um, Andy Smith has joined us, Vanessa Waite, Linda Brothers, and Rosalie Foreman. Um. They're amazing. Uh, two of them cannot join us this evening, but we, and you can see we have a great time, but. Um, they're hard workers and I appreciate every single thing they do for our food service departments. We call them team awesome.
Here's your, here's your curveballs.
Alright, so C E P is what we're doing this year, um, the community eligibility provision. We have about, we're about thirty-six percent free and reduced in our town. Um, they lowered, it used to be forty percent free and reduced, but they lowered to twenty-five percent, so we now qualify. Um, our reimbursements are a little bit lower. I'm not sure what that's gonna look like for us. Um, but our federal reimbursements are. Lower than what we're, we're used to getting. So um. But C E P, just a little bit of an information, a meal service option that allows school districts with high poverty rates to offer breakfast and lunch at no cost to all enrolled students. Which is amazing. This is exactly what I want to do. Um, increases access to nutritious. School meals and student participation, improves the learning environment and. Eliminates school stigma, um eliminates paperwork applications for students to receive free or reduced price school meals. Um, so I've collected any free or reduced applications to share, which is great. Um, eases administrative burden, improves program efficiency, um eliminates unpaid meal balances.
So this is new.
This is new uh to us. So this is a learning curve for me as well. This, we've never had done C E P in Wellington, so. Stafford is the only other town in our area that is doing C E P. So luckily I get to talk with Seth over there. Um, so. But so we're pretty lucky that we. Guess qualify because we can feed the kids for free. Otherwise, this year the state did not pass breakfast for free. So it would then, which once again, kids would either were gonna high debt or kids wouldn't be eating breakfast and we don't want that, so.
This is what we found out probably late in the summertime after phone calls brought by Stephanie. Um, and that's what, why it's free this year.
Yes, we're part of the C P program. Yeah, I, I, there was a lot of uh, things I did over the summer behind the scenes stuff to get that approved. Um.
This is just all the U S D A stuff?
Yeah, this is all the U S D A stuff. We're just an offer versus serve school. Um, students required to have three of the five components. Um, and one of those components must be a fruit or veggie. Um, you. We say all the time, grab a fruit or veggie, grab a fruit or veggie. I feel like we're a broken record. Um, most of them are getting it now, so. Yeah, it's just.
You know the buttons you can press and it says, you need one of those buttons.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Yes.
Sometimes it get eye rolled. Alright, so a little bit of information about breakfast. Um. Last year, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we served thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven breakfast meals. So about approximately two hundred and seven kids served daily to both schools. Um. And our breakfast, and you guys get to sample some tonight of our smoothies and yogurt parfaits. Hall school gets those every um day. Center school, we do about once or twice a week. Depending on the timing, because there's only two of them up there and. Um, some, some days are better than others, so. But the kids get excited for it. It's actually a special thing for them. So we're hall schools, we pick it every day, really.
And that's something that you brought in. That's, this is newer.
Yeah, this is, um, we just brought in two years ago, this smoothie machine I purchased for both schools. Um. Yeah, we, we got the uh Vita Night machine, same thing that Starbucks uses, so. It's pretty amazing. Um, this year, March fourth through eighth, we celebrated um National School Breakfast Week. Um, I went all out. I actually did not put that photo in here. I got a inflatable mango costume for the last day. I guess I forgot that, but I made up um new menu items every day. We had served up waffles, uh pineapple, sunrise smoothie, beef side biscuits with egg and cheese. Sandy beach yogurt parfait, sunset berry pancake sundaes. Um, I will say by the end of the week, we were exhausted, but we had a good time. I mean, we had music playing. I gave out ways the first day. Uh, this theme is really, really amazing. Um, and I'll wait a bubble machine too. The kids love the bubble machine. It looks like they're under the sea every day. Lot of fun. Alright, lunch. Alright, last year in twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we served fifty-three thousand two hundred and one lunches. That's almost all of our students. Like, we served three hundred, served daily, we, you. Pretty amazing. Um, especially at center school, the kids, there's a lot of kids getting lunch. Um, here's that. And then the farm to school program, which we um. Are working hard on building this program. Um, we get, we bought a variety of freshly grown produce last year and we um. Tried new recipes that were well received by staff and students. We did a kale yah salad. Um, the kids love the name more than. Um, the broccoli salad was good and then Mrs. Waite here in this photo, she um is making the apple and butternut squash casserole. Which was really good.
They were very good.
It's very good. Yep. So the apples, uh, we're getting some fresh produce right now. I'm working on branching out to other farms, but um. Caravan Farm from Southington is supplying our apples right now. So, so locally grown. Alright. Any questions?
Sure, we've not discussed lunch.
With the, so the, their dollar is under the financial, so we just put, took that out of here. So when you get to the financial report and you're gonna see. They have doodles money still, even after paying for lunches.
Last year, yeah. Yeah, cause last year, starting on November first, we allocated our funds to feed everybody for free. So all the paid students were able to eat breakfast and lunch for free. Last one lunch, this breakfast was free. Um. And, cause we, from the beginning of the school year to October thirty-first, we had about fifteen hundred dollars in school debt, school meal debt. Um, which is a lot for a little town. So I knew that need was there. So some school systems purchased new equipment and whatnot, and I said, I wanna feed the kids. So I allocated the funds for that.
So Dana should talk about your concern with moving to the C E P. Cause I always tell her to spend money.
Yeah, he tells me that I have plenty of money. So my concern is, and I'm not sure what it's gonna look like, because we haven't received a month of reimbursements yet. But our um federal reimbursement is extremely low. So what I can understand is um, from reading through the paperwork and once again, still I'm work in progress. I'm still learning it all. But we only get like fifty-four percent reimbursement of like four dollars and seventy-one cents of our, of our free population and. Forty-seven percent for a forty-two cents for our paid population. This'll look a little bit different when I find out exactly. So our reimbursements are lower. So meaning we could get two dollars for. You know, two times two hundred meals and then. So let's say twenty cents for the rest. So uh, these are just throwing numbers out here because I'm not exactly sure how much. We're gonna get. So in the coming months, I'll have a little better, you know, take on that. So. But our reimbursements are lower and he's like, you have plenty of money and I'm, I'm hesitant to spend the money even though it says it's there. And. Because I don't know what's to come. We can use our funds to offset the cost. Okay, we might have enough now. C E P is good for four years. I can back out if we have to at any time, like at the beginning of school year. So like it ends on June thirtieth and we say, hey, we can't afford this anymore. We have to go back to full pay. Take a deal. So we have it for, we're guaranteed it for four years. I don't have to reapply. So.
Backing out of it would be because the reimbursement's too low. We can't support it, got it?
Yep.
Cause they're self-sustaining. I mean, yeah, they have a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I mean, she spent thirty thousand dollars more, I think, last year in food. Um.
Right, so food costs are up and.
Still has over two hundred thousand dollars in the account.
So.
But we will, she was getting great reimbursements.
Right, and now we're not going today. So.
So we need to see how that impacts the balance.
Right. So right now it might show that I have a lot of money, but in the coming, because it is a self-funded food service program.
And it's pretty delayed. So like, I mean, I think we.
No, I think they still owe for June, so.
Yeah, well, no, I think June, June friendly hit this report.
June did it. Did it? Okay.
Like, it's really slow for the reimbursements to come in. So I think probably January, we'll probably sit down and go, okay, where are we at?
Yep.
And we can share that information with you because we'll, we'll have a couple of months of what are the reimbursements actually look like? And what's it doing to our budget? Is it status quo? Like, hey, we're doing okay? Or is it costing us fifteen thousand dollars a month? You know, we'll figure that out.
So I don't wanna give up C P's. I, I, it's great, I think it's great that we can give the kids for food, but. The self-funded food service program, I gotta make sure I can sustain our program.
And if you need a new piece of equipment? That's my.
I think I said that.
Four.
Sorry, you told me that, but I'm sorry.
That's, that, don't, don't worry about it, but.
Right, right.
Uh, it is hard though, because, and we've talked, we've talked about this a lot. But when people come in to fix your equipment and they're like, don't get rid of that.
Yeah.
Uh, there's something to be said for that. Because we've bought new equipment that has.
We have a eight-year-old refrigerator. Um, it's eight years old, a double door refrigerator. We had to replace the compressor on it, which is good money. So it was. I ended up replacing it because. Um, I don't like waste anyway, so we can fix it. I'm going to. And it was cheaper to fix it, obviously, but people just get rid of it and get new, but. He's like, just get a new one. I'm like, no, we're gonna fix it.
There are other options. We recently went to the convention and I'm thinking of efficient things as well. There are some nice new machines that if we're talking about combining schools and we have to feed four hundred kids. There are quicker and faster equipment, so I am up to looking at. You know, more better technology as well. Cause if we have a stove that has twelve stoves and only two of them work. That kind of sets us down.
I'm not gonna math, but that's not good.
Yeah, we, we do our, yeah. Our um stove top, there's like ten burners and only two or three of them work at the hall school, so.
May I ask a question?
Yep, it's not about money. Um.
Thank goodness.
I don't really have any answers.
So I'm always wondering about um food waste and kids because kids take one bite of things and they're like, oh, this is gross. All right, I'd rather talk to my friends and eat lunch or some things.
Yeah.
Do you guys like, I don't know, if there's a way to keep, keep tabs on that and what happens? Do we like feed chickens without food or something? I don't know if that's.
There was um somebody who did reach out to me about um getting the scraps. Um. But we haven't figured out a way to like manage that. Um. Making sure they're not putting stuff in that doesn't belong in there, in the bucket and whatnot. Some schools do. I mean, it is an option we can do if we can figure out logistically. To get the kids on board. You know, I always start at the middle school level and see then, you know, move it up to elementary so we can make it work at the middle school level, but um.
Food waste, I mean, there is some. That's why we have the shared table too. So when the student. Has to take their food or veggie, we have closed packaged things, raisins, banana or something. We just say, just. Put it right there. So if all they want is their hot dogs, then fine, just eat your hot dogs. But we try to eliminate. So then to, you know, when we say, please take your food and veggie, we have those packaged there.
And we're an all- versus serve school, so we, some school systems just put the food on the kids tray and there's a lot of ways where our kids can pick what they want. Um, obviously they have, you have to fit their criteria and they can take it. So, you know, they take their peanut butter and jelly sandwich. It comes in a bag of goldfish and a cheese stick. They can put the cheese stick and goldfish on the shared table and just eat their peanut butter and jelly sandwich. Um, as long as it's packaged, it goes on the shared table and it's worked wonders. Um, I brought it back to center school last year, two years ago, two years ago. And it's been good. It was, worked out a few kinks, but the shared table is amazing. And then. Um, I know that center school uses it and we do too when kids come down, but more so at snack time. If a kid forgets their snack, we say, okay, well, you can pick off the shared table. And so they can grab an apple or you know, whatever's on the shared table. So. So there is minimal waste. I mean, obviously if a kid takes a bite, one bite of a burger, that gets the trash. And we try our best. We don't, um. At hall school, we also offer those à la carte snacks from seventy-five cents to a dollar twenty-five. We're not all about that. Um, and students are not allowed to purchase a snack unless they finish their lunch.
That's amazing. Including ice cream?
Including ice cream. So if they um. Don't finish the, I mean, obviously if you're hungry for ice cream, you're hungry for the rest of your lunch. That's my motto, so. It's working, working.
I just have one more question too about, um. I mean, I'm sure I can look at this online, but like the calorie and fat content of the meals, I mean, I'm assuming that.
So we're federally regulated. I can only serve certain things. Um, everything's full grain and the low sugar and we have the low sodium content. Um. It's all federally like regulated. And you can look anything up there. If that's. Uh, if we were talking about this like four years ago, I say, well. When I couldn't, there was a shortage of food and I could just get what I could get, but now it's better and there's uh, we can only purchase certain products and that, so.
Fat-free milk.
Yep, well, the, low sugar, lower the sugar content on the milk this year, the chocolate milk.
Um, I just wanna say, I know I said more thing, but I, I love the fresh stuff that you guys are doing. I think that's amazing. Um.
Yeah, we're trying to build it better for the brand.
Yeah.
Fresh ones of veggies, I'll be.
And just like, I'm only one person on this board, but if you like needed help or wanted advocacy for that, like. Come talk to us, please.
That's a norm too. It's, is we wanna hear what you guys think from the feedback from home or from your family because. A lot of parents still send their kids with a cold pizza. Why are you packing your kid a cold pizza when your kid can be offered a fresh salad, a fresh sandwich? And I, we, we don't know how kids are still packing their lunch. I don't understand. I mean, at a hall school, there is a variety of food. Between sandwiches and salads and cereal flavors and E B and J's peanut butter and fluff. We can accommodate any picky eater. So it's hard to understand how people are still packing. The kids' lunch, you know, unless it's some sort of dietary need, of course, but if, we don't understand how. Kids are still eating the old pizzas.
Yeah, it's sad when I see a Lunchable out in the lunchroom.
We, we provide Lunchables to the kids.
I know, I do like those too.
Yes. Yeah, you know, turkey croquembouche, low-fat cheese. It's there, sorry.
Um, I have a, a question about the farm to table.
Yeah, the farm.
Yeah, sorry. Um. Is there certain guidelines that the farms have to meet for that? Like, why are we going to Southington versus?
Well, so the person that I'm using in Southington, I was using out of Ashford. So, um, it's a farmer that I know.
Yeah.
And he's working with a farm in Southington right now. That's why they're coming from him. Um, yeah, there's some local farms that I'm gonna reach out to now that it's back into the school season. So I reached out to them in the springtime and it was kinda, you know, they've. Emails, you know.
Yeah. How does that work? Like, do, does the school pay the farm for, for?
We pay for the, the product. So they, I think that they have to go through, because there's a list um from Yukon. There was a um, I don't remember the name of it is. But I did, I go through the Yukon, it's the RUD program, I think. Maybe. So something with farm to schools, they help us find the farms. Um, and I think they're, they have to go through some sort of something from um. The state to qualifications for it, yeah.
And then. What, can you list a couple more benefits of the C E P program? Cause like, weren't we. And Arthur, you wouldn't know, weren't we paying for, how were we paying for the?
Meal last time?
Yeah.
The last time they pulled it out of there, they were able to pull it out of this budget.
My, my food service budget.
Were allowing it for the longest time, then they finally came.
Well, the state final do pull the wording for it last year. So that's how we. So that's how we were able to use our funds where that was never allowed before. But last year it was allowed, this year it's not, so when I found out that breakfast wasn't gonna be free, we weren't allowed to use our funding, that's when I rolled into CEP.
But they're very aware, cause Willington is not the only account that's looking pretty healthy. They know it's an issue with the state and trying to find ways to make sure the dollars that are in there that you can feed kids, it's just, that's just baffling that you couldn't.
Right, and I, that's, I'm not saying that I don't want that, by asking the question, my question was like, is that something that we could have our? Senators fight for higher reimbursement on as well?
Well, I, so also on my school breakfast week, I, um, brought our senator, um.
Jeff Gordon.
Jeff Gordon out to come celebrate with us one day, so. And I was explaining to him how important school meals are, he saw the long line for breakfast and how important it was. Unfortunately, they did not pass food breakfast this year for our students, so.
That's her self fox, though, that she's always sending emails saying, can you advocate for this?
Yes, so there is, um, I can send you guys the information, um. School Meals for All is running a thing, um, to. Pushing for more for school meals for all, for universal school lunches, so there's some things that you guys can, people can fill out. It is in digital backpack in both schools this week, information about it. To their, making that push for the January, um, for the Senate to legislative, legislative session. And it starts in January, so they're making a push for universal school meals and that would alleviate the lower reimbursements.
So besides the reimbursement, is it also because of that program, you were saying that, um. It makes it like less embarrassing for the people who do need it, like, you know, because in the past.
In, in the past, I mean, we've seen it. I've been in this food service program for seventeen years, so I've seen a lot, um. Years ago, our program would like basically state free, reduced, paid, it would say around the screen, it no longer does that. We, we removed that a long time ago, but it did say that. And then, you know, one kid would walk by and say, oh, you get free lunch and then it, you know, or then I'd have kids that would come up and be like. Um, talking with their friends, like, oh, you know, I get free lunch and you have to pay for it, ha, 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 like trying to make, you know, light of the. Situation and kind of, you know, it's, it's just sad, so that, that alleviates that. Everybody's free, nobody has to worry about paying for it. Um, we've had students in the past that wouldn't eat because they had no money on their account. Years ago, we had to, we were told to feed them cheese sandwiches if they owed money, um. But, um, that's what we were told to do from our, in the past, so, um. Things like that, like, oh, you have to eat a cheese sandwich because you have no money in your account and.
You can't see that anymore.
You can't, you can't, you can't deny a student a meal anyways, and I would never deny a student a meal, but that was in the past and I, I've just seen it and now we don't have to worry about it. Everybody can eat for free and not have to worry. The parents don't have to worry, kids don't have to worry.
Let's say for some reason, cause you said that. This program's good for four years.
Right, I don't have to reapply for it.
But like, let's say for whatever reason, you decide that it's not a good fit because of self.
Food service spending funds, yeah.
Yeah, is there any way to like kind of take some of the other benefits of the program and then kind of like make it our own type of thing? Like, for example, um. Like, is there a way to keep giving, like? I'm having a hard time speaking tonight.
So the food service department is self funded, so I have to have money to be able to do it. But, um, I mean.
You're also regulated by twice.
Right, so CEP, they give you.
Process to set our lunch price. And we sometimes battle the state to say, why would we raise lunch or breakfast prices when we have a hundred thousand dollars in our account? That doesn't make sense. Now, thankfully, in the past, we've gotten, they said, leave it alone.
Yeah, well, that, that was, and so not leaving alone. But, um. Yeah, so say like three years from now, we're like, oh my goodness, we have no money left. What are we gonna do? We're gonna have to back out of CEP then, you know, I mean. Hopefully, universal school lunches will be passed, so let's push for all school meals for all. So let's just see where it takes us. Right now, we're okay, and I get to feed the kids your food this year, so I'm happy about that. And I'll just see what happens.
Yeah, so you're up here, you have money in your account, let's pretend it's unlimited. Let's just pretend it's, just putting you on spot and just saying, what would you, what would be your next improvement, not necessarily the equipment? But to the food, what would you do to either improve it, get a better, get from a better place, get a better kind of food, what, what would be your ideal next thing?
So I purchase, um. I don't buy cheap food. So that's why, like, I, I don't know if we can, from federally regulated on what I can get and what company I have to purchase it from. I think we get pretty decent, good food, um. We would need more equipment to maybe process more food, so we would need to get equipment, um.
You need time.
Time, yeah, time, more people to process, so do those extra things. Um, we do a pretty good job with what we have. I mean, we, we would need more equipment to.
I think she's been phasing in additional hours to try and accommodate. Some of the newer things that she's doing, and that's what I think we advocate for, is like, hey, you have to work within a budget. You know, if the budget's there, let's keep pushing it, and those are things where.
We, we are working on more scratch cooking, um, I will tell you that the kids are kind of like. Stand offish on it, because they're used to what they're used to, um, we do try day, try a days, um, I know center school does some things in the morning. Try some items at breakfast on Fridays, try a new item, um, at Hall, um, Mrs. Waits then. Making more soups, we made a homemade cheddar and broccoli soup last year, uh, beef and bean chili, um. What else did you make? Uh, chicken and bean, white chicken chili. White chicken chili, um, chicken fajita soup, we've done a lot of different things, um, sometimes the kids are like. They're really like, try it, you might like it, and then the kids do, once they get them to try it.
So that's about time, I mean, that was.
It's another thing about time, so, um, she'll work on those things on typically on like. Tuesday, when, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is more, she has a little bit more time to do that extra stuff, um. So we're bringing in more scratch cooking as. As the years go on, we've, we definitely improved in four years.
Food standards haven't gone down, they've, they've been better and, you know, when I first started working, there was a certain type of meat that. Nobody liked, everybody hated, as soon as she became food director, she asked that, she's like, I, we're not getting from that anymore, it's only, uh. Real USDA.
I don't wanna say you're certain, but it's just one of those things where it's like, well, would you, what would be your next, you know, what would be your next?
So I want to bring more scratch cooking in, but we need more equipment for that and more space and more time, more maybe an extra hand, you know, there's so. I would like, I like to bring more scratch cooking to center too, but it's hard with their kitchen so small and lack of equipment. Where we have, um, the tilthill at Hall, we have the seamer pot at Hall, so, um.
And these are all conversations that she and I have, like, what would you drink, how could you, you know, what could you do? Could be cook it at Hall, bring it to center, what's that look like? How do we, you know? What, what are we talking about?
And Taco Day, I, I love it, my man loves taco meat that's hooked at center at Hall and bring it up to center. Pouring rain and all, so. But yeah, because we cook the ground beef in the tilthill at Hall and then. Put it in a pan, put it in our, um, insulated bag and drive it up there, so. Taco salad is a big.
I said this before, just randomly, I mean, I know, I think you guys are the, like, the under, underappreciated members of the school, um. And previously being in center, in center cafeteria myself, I definitely appreciated the center staff, I. And I appreciate the whole staff that just haven't been up there as much.
I will say, though, I see Mrs. Gorman's face on a B at center.
We gotta get it, you have to take a selfie. Have you sent her alongside? Probably longer than that.
I've been hurtful with that.
Yeah, you were principal then, that's. Yeah, so, thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much. Keep passing acts on.
Yeah, we very much appreciate team awesome, I'm even saying team wrong, but that's. And I write our team, of course, and I have to say, it's trying to get all mushy about, um, use for the children's food, but you do want. Rosalie knows, sometimes kids need you, sometimes you are the throne up, uh, that the child needs everything. And that means a lot to the moms and the dads and the families and the kids, and I probably brings a little smile to your face too, to know sometimes that. Those kids are looking just for you, so thank you, we love you all. Now go home and go to bed. Thank you. All right, um, we are ready to proceed to agenda item number six, which is president speak. Okay, wow, I have like no voice, sorry. Um, okay, president to speak, thank you for coming and getting in with us, hope you learned a lot about our buildings and our awesome food service program. If you would like to share your thoughts, please bring them to five minutes and, um, we'll start with folks on the room, we'll try and see who's raising our answer.
Uh, yeah, look, actually, Jan Marshall Fisher, Fisher Hill Road, um. But I, second, hopefully you found that's on, I have team awesome, um, I know. Your service, that my, my kids appreciate them, and I know just through walking through Hall, they, they, the entire. Staff, that's a piece of my card, that's ever really, um, valued members by the students, the department committee, and it's awesome. I came to just, um, two other items, I, I completed, so I necessarily queue in, um, facility studies, so I'll just. Largely let that sit with the exception of just making a comment, um. That in any further discussions, the importance of realizing the impact of renovation efforts, um. To students going to school through face instruction all the time is, it should never be left out of discussion, um. You may have addressed it, I apologize if you haven't, I just, I'd ask you to continue to keep that at the front of your mind, um. And then lastly, um, I just wanted to speak briefly, because I'm not gonna make it to the end of your meeting, um, to say I support, um. I support where you guys are at with policies for, uh, restricting the cell phone use, um. My wife and I are, are some of those evil parents who let our ten year old have cell phones, but, uh, repeated daily attempts, um. And attempts at bribery, honestly, to try to, to relay need, um. But I really do pretty think a, um. Uh, and no phones from start to finish. Options, um, is, is really. All it's you, uh, you know, I, I, I just don't see the benefit, so you're starting school there, um. And I know how much of a distraction that can be. I guess that'll be bad parents, our friends all have cell phones, um, and so I know where it goes, um. But that, thank you, that's it. Oh, sorry, one last question, um, when is that Q and M stuff gonna be shared or posted? Tomorrow? I'm just tired of taking it, sorry, you guys, no pressure.
My Christmas Eve. Okay, thank you. All right, we're looking at online, I see, um, Mrs. Foltz has a hand up. The machine inside.
Yes, you should be able to, Kylie, you should be able to unmute yourself. Yeah, one, let's ask two unmute.
Hi, guys, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me? Hi there, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, hi, this is Kylie Foltz, uh, three twenty-one talent turnpike. I wanted to echo the thoughts about the food service people, they are amazing. And my kids love them and they are super pumped to have all these awesome options, especially my kid that came from center. That now can get smoothies and all the good stuff from Hall, um, and I also wanted to thank you guys for just taking the time to consider. Uh, the petition that I wrote and just my comments about, uh, the cell phone policy and hoping to have a little more. Uh, parent feedback before we move forward, so thank you guys for your time and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Catherine. Hold on, you have to press twenty-six buttons until we can. Hi, Catherine.
Hi, how's everybody doing? Um, I too wanted to just echo, um, you know, the food service folks, they've been doing an excellent job and. Having, uh, both my kids go through center and one's still there and one at Hall, um, they have been really excited about. Um, the changes that have been made over the last, uh, few years and. Uh, I'll tell you one thing, I didn't have lunches like that when I grew up, so. Um, I'm excited to see all the fresh options for the kids and. Um, they are an underappreciated staff and, uh, I, I think, under recognized, I should say, not underappreciated. But, um, yeah, so I, it's, uh, it's definitely a great improvement, so. Um, if we can extend our kudos to Stephanie and her group, that would be great. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else there wanted to share this time? Once, twice, three times, maybe, we, we really aren't that the same. We will have another opportunity at present to speak if you hang on with us down to item number twelve, thank you. Is there a, there's a food service appreciation week, right?
We do everything, like, all staff, because they're all scattered throughout the year, we do a staff appreciation week, all week for every.
I wonder if they have a special one.
They absolutely do. It's like cafeteria, oh, hero, worker, hero, or something like that.
Let's find out. Maybe do something special. Okay. We can make lunch by then. I don't know, I mean, I gotta go to real.
That seems like a lot of pressure.
Okay, um, item seven on our agenda is communications, thank you to Kylie Foltz, Alyssa Hinkley. And Noella Calvo for taking that time to send emails to us with your thoughts, we took a look at them, we appreciate them, thank you very much for that.
And I, I gave you more, um, through a folder. Um, so things that I had received, they didn't necessarily watch the entire board, but because there were more coming in, just so you could see the feedback, so. Uh, Melissa Abicarmi had sent something that's in folder for you to see. Um, Gary Anderson sent, sent a quick, uh, piece of feedback, you said Calvo already? Uh, Collins was another one who sent, um, some feedback, and what I did is because it just came to me. I'd saved it as a PDF and I dropped it into a folder, so you can read all of those communications, uh, there were several, uh, Kylie Foltz. Things back and forth exchanges that we had, and then, um, Mike McCoo had sent me a text that was around that as well, so I saved that as a PDF as well, so you can see that.
And the petition signatures are out, so, okay, great. Awesome, thank you. Um, okay, item eight is the superintendent report, we're kicking that out for enrollment, thank you.
Yes, so this will be quick tonight, so we only, uh, increased one, so center school is at two oh five. HMS is still at one sixty-eight, um, so we're at three seventy-three right now, and again, that doesn't include the six out placements we have right now. Uh, which would make it, uh, three seventy-nine. Uh, the after school program, we had a great opening, uh, it's, it's fully staffed. Uh, we made some adjustments, uh, where people can work a day or two, uh, paraprofessionals. And it's, it's great, they want some extra hours, and so people had been really appreciative of that. Some of our cafeteria staff have taken some additional hours as well, so talking about being, you know, impactful, they're doing that, um. Director Kelly Sullivan is moving things along, our participants seem to be happy, I've been at both programs, um. We did adjust, uh, our procedures to allow the part-time attendees based on the feedback. We moved it from if you're a part-time attendee to the minimum being three days. So that would be the minimum, uh, so that was kind of a compromise, uh, that we have now, so, um. That was adjusted in the handbook, uh, and so paying full cost.
And all of the students that fold.
No, we could accept more. We have more slots and so we're staffed based upon our numbers right now. Um, the days where we add students on the early release days, we'll pull in some additional staff members. Um, but we could, I think we could add students right now. Hall is is definitely um. It's new. Like the kids, I think when they started seeing they they pulled out the cricket machine. Once already and they started making things. If you didn't know what a cricket machine, I didn't know what a cricket machine was, but you know, buttons, stickers. T-shirts, like they're working on things that they can make. Uh, and it's been well received so far, so I think it might grow some. We'll see.
Can I ask something about that? Is there um an opportunity for hands to provide feedback maybe in? Couple weeks in, just do like a quick check in.
Yes. Yeah.
Suggestions, recommendations, how's it going? If there's further questions, that might be helpful.
Yeah.
May I have a question, ask a question also as a parent who has a kid in a after school program, it's hard for me to extract information from him like. Like impossible.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering if we had talked a little bit about having um. It's kind of an overview of what the day looks like. Um. Yeah, so I guess it's kind of the same thing that you're talking about. Um. I just pick him up at five and wonder what the afternoon was like, so.
So there right now is a lot of choice because they're still trying to figure things out and make sure, you know, make sure staff is looking good. There's outside time. There's a snack that's provided by the food services program. Um, but some kids are playing chess. Some kids are. You know, going outside there. It's it's a variety of things. Um, that program is a little bit smaller. Um, the, and I just talked to Kelly about this recently. Part of the grant. Is we have to put funding in. We did put funding in for uh rental contact. So we're gonna plan some sort of parent night where you can come in and see what they're doing and see what games are in there. What are they playing? They have Legos. They have all sorts of things and part of the grant is also geared towards student interest. So as kids say, I wish we could or had, that's how we're trying to build the framework.
That's great.
Um. The catch right now is we're watching funding. Um, to see how much we're gonna bring in because when we wrote the grants. Uh, and we redid the budget for this year, we had four thousand dollars left and that was all supply money. That's after all the staffing costs. So. When we wrote the grant initially, we had twenty thousand dollars for special programming. Like bringing in Horizon Wings and things like that. That pocket of money doesn't exist right now. We're hoping the minimal money that we are charging. Can be used to do those types of things, but we have to build that fund first. So. Alright, changing gears. Um, we wrote, uh, we work with human services department and we received a grant for vape detectors for all school. Um, they have been installed in various bathrooms that happened this summer at HMS. Uh. It is something that I think all school systems have seen an increase in vaping over the years. It's one of those tools that if it can help us, you know, we're gonna try and use it. Um, they're inconspicuous. They're not in every bathroom. Uh, we bought, we could afford through the grants. Uh. I have a feeling that there would be more of those grant opportunities coming forward and if that's the case and we can get that more, we'll add them to more bathrooms, but they're. Um, not gonna tell you where, but they're out there. Uh, and basically what happens is it sends a message to an administrator. Uh, and uh lets them know that there's a change in air. Quality in the bathroom. Uh, and it also. Not that we have a problem with this, but some districts were having problems with fights in bathrooms. Uh, scheduling fights in bathrooms and it picks up volume. So significant changes in volume in the bathroom will also trigger uh a alarm. So uh it has not gone up yet. So that is a good thing.
Are we gonna know like just because I wanna know?
As we go forward, if if we start, yeah, uh you'll know like if I report you in January, hey, it's we've gotten ten reports.
Yeah.
Uh, it we will address it. Um, I think we made it public on Friday, I think it was, and it is your backpack. Uh, just to let people know like it's it's there. Um. But. It's something that we will will watch, so. We only hired one um additional person since last meeting. That's Heather Roskowski. She is the district staff support specialist. So now we have a Sarah Rutkowski and a Heather Ruskowski. Uh, who I've had to uh tell HR. Um, the only opening we have right now is facilities director, which is the next one. Um. We had a finalist, uh, the storm hit and for that person's job, it we've gotten no communication back. So I have a feeling that person is trying to quietly withdrawing. Um. We have a couple of options and I'm looking for a little feedback from you on this. Uh, we can do a few things. Obviously, we can repost. That's very easy to do. Um. And try and branch out with our our postings, getting off just indeed trying to look at some other posting spots. We looked at a specific engineer's uh site that would allow us to post. And it was like six hundred dollars. That just didn't make a lot of sense to me for one posting. Um. So we could put them in, you know, monster dot com, indeed several. We could do that same thing again. Um. We could consider there is a couple of districts uh close enough in proximity that are in the same boat. Uh, I could reach out to them and see if it's something that they would consider sharing and I have a feeling that now that we've opened it once, maybe part of this is salary related. Um, and so you could consider. You would only get a part time person for a similar dollar amount. By combining, you would be able to. Pay somebody more, but you not seeing them every day, if that makes sense. So that's something that we could consider. Um, if you wanted me to go that route, we could wait till after we post and see if something comes up. Um, you could consider hiring. A firm on an hourly basis, just like you do with Novus. You could do a contract with uh. You know, a Q and M, a colleague or some sort of firm, they'd have to bid on it. And they tell you what your your rates were, your negotiated rate. So if you needed an engineer, you'd have an engineer. And you'd pay that rate. If you needed a senior. Whatever, you could pay that rate. If you needed a project manager, you could get that person. Um, the pro of that. Is that just like Novus, when you have a server issue, you get a server person. The con of it is you don't have somebody here every day. Um. It might meet the need, but. It's uh, I don't know what the answer is, so I'm loo- looking for a little feedback. Uh, if you wanna think about that and shoot me email, I think that's fine. We are posting it again. Uh, it's been long enough. We wanted to let it sit a little bit. Um.
Could you chat with the other districts that might be interested and see if they are interested in making up a bit?
I have already talked to one and. The raw conversation is they are. Um, we didn't talk money. Days of the week, like we didn't talk about it again. Uh, but they are running to similar issues interviewing people. Um, getting really green or not the right fit. Um, or. Not the correct expertise that they're looking for. We have not talked enough to know if we're looking for the same things because that would matter.
Where did you post it?
Uh, it was on Indeed, uh, and I think it was on CT Reed.
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, there's not a lot of things on CT.
For that. Does Apple jump on their website right now?
Yeah, there's not a lot of spots. It's really hard to find things that are. On CT Reed when it's not a teacher administrator and it's hidden under other. And you've gotta dig. So I'm not sure that's where people are looking. We get a lot of applications through Indeed. But we haven't branched out to other ones yet.
Is LinkedIn good for that?
That's what we, that's what we, you know, looking at places like that.
I think, I mean, I can certainly email us too, but like post reposting seems to make. Sense at least just to see what happens.
Yeah, she's maybe expanding a little bit.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm I'm just concerned about sharing a position like that, especially at the beginning, like we were talking about when. You know, when we started talking about this position, it was something that was needed. Immediately and tremendously here and then, you know, maybe phasing it out over the next few years or so. So I could see it maybe going down to the part time position at some point. But starting off at part time seems like.
Yeah. Even if you have only a couple million dollars in projects. It'd be well worth it.
Yeah.
You know, if that's where the the town lands, what they'll support it, you'll get your money's worth out of that person.
Yeah.
Um, if they're not gonna support a couple million dollars with projects. Won't that person?
They wouldn't be.
The other candidates you interviewed, did they just not meet the need or was this one finalist? Above them, is this something you could go back to possibly the second person if they were considered or would not be able to consider?
I think the committee would say the people that we were looking to move forward were there for a reason. The people that we did not move forward. Were not close to what we were looking for, just very, very different.
So did you have a secondary person?
We had two people that we were moving forward and then one um saw the salary.
Okay.
And withdrew. Um, and the second one was going to be coming back and then.
Okay, so essentially you don't have anybody. That's essentially.
Not, we have zero right now. That's why I'm sharing with you. Just there's no nobody in the hopper where I'm like, ooh, maybe. So if you have any creative ideas, we'll post again. Um, and I can report out. The. Thing that you could consider is. You couldn't raise the salary this year from the perspective of you have the the salary. However, you could pay the person the salary from. November first to the end of the year. But that would require you next budget year to put. The balance in.
Right.
So something did concern, uh, I, you know, you know, the the. I think the range of the one ten plus one twenty. Fred, the poll went up today. It was in California. It was two eighty. No way, no way. So.
Yeah.
So what budget?
Eighteen?
Uh, we have eighty thousand budgeted plus benefits. So it's total one ten. If they wave benefits and you said, hey, you could use that money towards that, you could do that. The issue is if you do that. You're paying them a hundred and ten and then they decide they want benefits, they're eligible. So it's a slippery slope.
For me, the only person I wanna share, only way of share it would be the town set up like, okay, we'll put the other part in our budget. You cover this here. Let's split the person.
Keep it in Willington.
Uh huh.
Yeah, yeah. I I do have concerns about sharing.
Mm hmm.
Like when you need the person, you need the person and. Uh.
If they're two towns over, yeah.
It's discouraging to hear that that um salary might not be getting us the pool that we wanted when we were quite sure that would happen. Do you think that our discussions about um renovations and fixing and our very long CIP list is deterring people? From wanting to participate because we are.
It could. I I a lot of our candidates that we had come through um. Were still fix it people. And uh didn't have the experience, not that OSCGR mattered. It didn't matter to us. I think that'd be nice, but. Um, it was the management and budgeting and marketing and selling projects. Uh, clear presentations, like that's what this job is about.
Person that withdrew, would it be? Silly to go back to them and just say, what were you thinking and just see what they say? Or were they not even in the?
No, I think they'd respond to me. If I if I said, well, you know, you told us that we were not in the ballpark, what what is the ballpark? I think that person would would share with me confidentially.
Well, were was that the best person for the job, I think, or like the best of what we had?
They were finalists. They would have moved on. I I I don't wanna say that because it's not fair. And we were moving to a next round and there were two people in that next round and that person was individuals was going to the next round. The next round was going to be a presentation around for the buildings. Here's the Q and M report. Give us a quick presentation of how you're gonna sell this to to folks. That was gonna be our our task. Um, and you know, someone may look good grade on paper and. Can't sell a project. We wanted to see that.
That's a big step for this.
And that's why it was part of our process. Um, we just didn't get there.
Right, so throw it back out there. It's released in.
Alright, and the last, the other, um, just the W E eight negotiations that are underway. We've exchanged proposals uh. And it's moving along that teacher's contract, so we have a meeting next week uh and uh hopefully we could just keep going in a positive direction, so.
That is only for others, that's kind of related to Bill. Uh, so. I was thinking revenue school year. Um, and I always want for more data and more uh things to be reported on. Uh, would it be out of line to ask for a monthly update? I know Hall has an anonymized. Um, essentially complaint box for students that can report instances of bullying or harassment or anything like that. Would it be out of line to ask for a a monthly update on the instances that month and see any kind of trend? Because again, it's anonymized data. It doesn't single anybody out, but it would be, I think would be nice to know if these. Bullying incidents happen, if they're consistent throughout the year, if they go up and they go down, if there's a common cause, anything like that. Would that be something to that more?
The board wants, I mean, it's just data that says, you know, I mean, we're gonna talk about cell phones tonight. You could say, how many cell phone issues do you have? How many bullying incidents do you have? How many vaping incidents? I mean, give you those examples.
Good, thanks.
I think more data is always good.
Mm hmm. Those are all things we have like on our minds right now and we're trying to address it though. Medium actionable and valuable, yeah. Thank you. Okay, um, we're moving on to the financial section of our agenda. Nine A is the September of twenty twenty four financial report, which was our attachment one.
Yeah, so um. This is the first real kind of picture for you where we spent some money. Um. Typical supply money and and remains and and across a lot of the lines. Now we've encumbered all the positions for center school, so that music and staff support specialist. Uh, has been encumbered. The district person is is fully in the the center school budget, just so you know that, so it's not split out. Um, we have not applied the. Title one where it's an offset for a position, things like that. Uh, that hits center school and hall school, so those monies will come back in to the remaining balance. Um, so that's typical, you know, you see that in programs one and two. In program three, I think we encumbered over six hundred thousand dollars from your last meeting. Uh, we have encumbered for out placements, the tuition, all transportation is encumbered. The grant funds or IDEA are not encumbered yet. Um, so those will will bring back some some monies. Um. The program four, all of the funds are encumbered for the regular transportation contract. We actually prepaid uh. August, September in last year's budget intentionally. Um, and so it's actually helping us now. And so we are gonna be short of some club transportation funds and so that is uh gonna help with that. So that twenty eight, uh, sorry. That ninety thousand dollars, the reason for that is because of the one of the prepayments. Um. Health services, minimal change. The in the program six, the stifans have been encumbered. That's like team leaders, curriculum leaders, all that has has been encumbered. Very minimal change in utilities, uh, operations and maintenance, typical for this time of year. Um, that's where the facilities manager funds are. Uh, nine, the school choices, like people, kids that go to magnet schools. Um, and that's about twenty thousand dollars, so that's not encumbered. Uh, and some of our subscriptions like. Microsoft Office or licenses, things like that. Those are not encumbered yet. The last piece, uh, we encumbered over a hundred thousand dollars in social security and tax shelter annuities. Um, the tax shelter annuity is part of the um non-certified contract. And so that's the matching three percent for those employees. Uh, so that's been encumbered and social security has been encumbered. We still do not have the balance yet for the new staff of if someone left and they were taking family insurance and we hired someone who is single or waived. That's not reflected yet. So the fact that we have one seventy six in there could be, could go up or down, if that makes sense. So. I'm gonna be honest, where I feel like um I'm kind of watching this budget again. I always like to see when the grants come in because I. Don't like seeing the nine thousand dollar balance at hall school, I'll be honest with you. Um. But once the grant funds come back into that, it'll bring it back up into that, you know, eighty thousand, ninety thousand range. So we're keeping an eye on that, but. Overall, right now, we're we're doing okay.
Why do you think all this one?
Um.
Think a lot of prepaying or?
It's no, no, it's just, it depends on what the need is. So if they've encumbered a lot of their items already.
Mm hmm.
Which they have. I mean, you can see there's two million dollars encumbered. Things like they might encumber twenty thousand dollars for maintenance. Which they have, I mean, you can see there's two million dollars encumbered, things like they might encumber twenty thousand dollars for maintenance. Um and it's it's so they can use it right away. And the reason I asked the both, you know, them to do that is because I don't wanna see, have it seem like there's money sitting there, like.
Yeah.
Even subscriptions, I push, Brenda does a bunch of things and she knows typically October. We have to pay for Power School, I want that encumbered, I don't want it to seem like that five thousand dollars is sitting there.
Mm hmm.
And it's that there's a bunch of money there, because there's not. Really, the simple monies that you see in these lines are supplies. And they've already spent a bunch of money in supplies too, so. Can I move to the next financial report? Okay, so Sammy asking, you shall receive, here is the budget summary for the end of twenty three twenty four, okay? So this becomes your. Kind of your final document, because I like, I don't like zeroing, having a a picture of transferring the show of zeros, because it's not real. So in this budget summary, you had a uh balance after all of the madness last year, effect forty five thousand dollars. Uh half a percent, that's where we land. Um that's after all the grant changes to apply grants in, that's after freezing the budget, so that's not a lot of wiggle room in a nine million dollar budget. So um when you look at the programs. I've added in comments of why. We did the chimney project out of center school, we determined that in June, we did it, it's done, it has not leaked, great so far. So that brought them under. So now they have a four thousand, okay? Um hall school, they purchased some extra C K L materials, they had two replacement doors for for um classrooms. They had purchased soccer goals, that put them twelve thousand dollars in the hole. You know what the shortfall is in special education, that was all the out placements, the fact that it was only sixty eight thousand dollars at the end was amazing. Um transportation, pretty reasonable. Um. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, like we had planned balances, we were holding money to make sure that we could pay all the special education bills. And then the savings from health insurance was already transferred twice, if you remember, to cover the uh special education shortfall. So in the end, forty five thousand dollars is your balance. Um. I was holding my breath at the end, because just watching money move is, it's, you know, it's that's tight. Um. So that's where your final number will be, now what you have to do is you cannot leave these programs in the negative. Okay? So this right here is your budget transfers to zero out your programs. But the budget piece in the end, the total, what you have balanced, forty five thousand will not change. Okay, so I have talked to Donna and she agrees with me, we don't wanna change. This document, because it's false information to put something at zero, because it's not where you landed. But you do have to make the transfers, does that make sense?
Mm hmm.
So the transfers that you need to make, this is what Donna pulled for us. You would move um to center school, four thousand forty six dollars from operations and maintenance, and you can see, there's the shortfall. You would pull it from operations and maintenance from right there, okay? Just as an example, to um hall schools, whole, you have to, you would bring twelve thousand four twenty two from operations and maintenance to hall school. And then the special education coverage would come from fringe and system-wide support. You can do this all in one motion if you'd like, just to say, from program eight to program one, four thousand forty six. From program eight to program two, twelve thousand four twenty one, does that make sense?
Mm hmm.
All the way through, but you do need to make a motion to bring those programs back. This is.
So. Um I don't have the numbers, but I could um give you the names.
I can make this really.
It's okay, or just read it, okay, do that, okay, I move that we take four thousand forty six dollars from operations. Maintenance.
Yep.
Program eight to cover program one C E S elementary school line. Okay, and that we take from. But from program eight, operations and maintenance. Um twelve thousand four hundred and twenty one and apply that to program two, all the middle school. And that we take um sixty thousand seven hundred twenty three. From program and fringe and substitutes and apply it to program three special ed. And that we take seven thousand eight hundred seventy six from system-wide support program. Nine and apply it to program three special ed motion. Thank you, basically done, thank you.
Discussion. Um. Uh all in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Okay, the last piece of this now is because that money is. What was the balance was, was the forty five thousand, is you need to consider uh your, what you wanna do for non-lapsing now, so I'm gonna make this really big for you. So. This is the, to get to the balance, you have to figure out what you can do, so the maximum amount of the transfer, this is what would be a hundred eighty three thousand, you don't have a hundred eighty three thousand, okay? Um the maximum fund balance that you can have is two hundred ninety three thousand. All right? You have forty five thousand five oh two to transfer. Your forecasted fund balance after applying the funds from this year is two hundred thirty thousand. That means the maximum allowable transfer would be sixty two thousand, you only have forty five. So. If you would like to. Almost max out your non-lapsing account. Um you would make this motion here. And that would basically give you again the buffer. To again, if budget's tight this year, you could pay some, do offset some of those six out placements right now, you could do that. And this is after you would have um. It's the, after you add the forty five, you you would have like two seventy five, that's after the sixty two thousand you already applied this year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um the non-lapsing fund, we we took money from that last. Budget season to offset special ed, so how is it that we have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars now?
Because you took a hundred and fifty. But you, at the end of the prior, the year before, you put a hundred and twenty in. So it was money out, money in. When we were watching our, what we, we left this as our final buffer for special education during the year. And we solved the problem through grants, so if you remember, we transferred, uh I wanna say over a hundred thousand dollars. From the current, the the twenty three twenty four budget health insurance to offset. We transferred forty five thousand dollars from our Vessar, like we were transferring money from all over the place to cover. Transportation was, I think, after school program, like there was, we covered wealth. So all, we pulled money in, so this didn't get touched. The sixty two would come out and it would give us the money again. What I've already said to my admin team was if this two seventy five lives. To the end of this year, when you're writing your budget in December, January. You should be doing a a pretty good offset, in my opinion, um for its special education costs. You could potentially do a hundred twenty five thousand, leave one fifty in there as a placeholder or an additional outplacement, or you choose to leave it all, now that's up to you. All I'm telling you is if you don't transfer the forty five. It will go back to the town and once it goes into that general fund, you can no longer access it.
Forty five five oh two or forty five five oh three? Cause the the budget, budget summary, our final report had the. I just wanna make sure the number.
You know, I bet she rounded, I bet it's it's four oh, forty five five oh two and change.
Okay, I just, I wanted to be an accurate number, because I don't wanna come back and transfer, you know, a dollar.
Yeah, I would do the five oh two, because that's what she put here, um yes. If you're gonna do it.
Okay, so we need a motion in a second, just so we can discuss, I think. Can you bring back that other member?
Is this, this is the motion right here, if you're gonna do it.
Nobody else wants to do it, if not, I will do it. Um. I move that we request a transfer of forty five thousand five hundred and two dollars from. F Y twenty three twenty four Board of Education operating budget to the Board of Education Non-Lapsing Fund.
So.
Who said that? Thank you, so so much easier.
Just by institution, that's probably change, are you being through overdropping?
Do you wanna discuss the movement? Did any have any questions, man, that you wanted to say before?
I don't know, I. I really think it should go into going on lapsing fund, but a small part of me is a little torn, because it's not a huge amount of money and to me, it's almost like um. Uh just to show, what's what's where I'm looking for.
Good faith.
Thank you, show like good faith to the town, to give it back to the town, because we fought a lot in the budget process. I mean, in all reality, it should be in the non-lapsing fund, so we can lean on it if we need to. But at the same time, it's not a huge amount of money, so.
Does it maybe um. Cause less of burden for us to hold out, but so we don't have to go back to the town and ask that too?
Yeah.
Kind of six.
I know. Yeah, but remember, we mentioned that and that really seemed a bit like that here, so.
I don't know.
Yes, so I I'm not, I'm not arguing, I wouldn't argue either way, is I guess what I'm saying, you know, if we. Wanna put it on our last thing, I have no problem with that, but if we wanted to give it back, I might.
I think that's why I'm also making the recommendation to offset next year's budget.
Mm hmm.
If you have that pocket of money. You know.
I think considering the situation. And all of the creative. Ideas that had to happen to pay for. All these things that happened with different out placements happening. I'm repeating myself here, sorry, it's getting like.
No, it's fine.
You know, just the. It was one thing after another, it was this perfect storm of situations and Phil had to. Keep coming to us with creative ways to solve it and we never went back to the town and said we need more money and I think. Maybe we could have gone, we should have gone back to the town and said, this is our need, instead of showing that we can take care of it ourselves. It could go either way.
Right, yeah.
But I do feel like, I don't know that it was appreciated. The efforts that were put in to save the town, giving us more money in the middle of the budget season.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
I re, I I don't, I sat at that meeting and I don't think it was appreciated by many people and it's really frustrating. And then we give money back and then when we ask for what we need to pay for our students. Not for some frilly thing, to pay for students to get what they need. We have to fight and go back to budget twice, that's frustrating.
We also have a pretty good history of returning a nice chunk of change at the end. Um when, which I think one of our members even asked, like, why are we looking at it? So, okay, so you're standing, got you, Sam, yeah.
Um. I'm having a brain fart, but. When we have returned mon, I guess my question is, I'm sorry if I'm spacing out, but I'm being confused.
Your questions are always worth reading.
Um, so this forty five, like, have we returned this in the past or like? I understand, like, we can only max out our non-lapsing fund to a certain extent. So when that happens, do we then always, we always have to return the remainder? Have we, my question is, is have we ever returned something prior to making our max? You understand what I'm asking?
Yes, and I don't think so, I agree.
I don't want it to become part of the course, like, oh, well, you returned more last time and then had a setting precedent. You know what I mean, it's a concern, based on what Tracy said, like, having some struggles. You know? I appreciate Arthur's point that it's like, okay, it would show, but like, is it worth it, I don't know.
Right.
You know, I, my vote is to to keep it in our non-lapsing fund and keep continuing doing that, because we have been doing that for a purpose. It shows consistency, so they know what to expect and I think above and beyond us. Reaching our maximum self-sufficient fund, my favorite phrase, you know what I mean, is like, then they're like, okay.
Yeah.
And that kind of just sets a precedent to what to expect, you know, instead of like, okay, well, now we're doing it this year and I will change our mind next year and, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like that might raise more questions, bounce around a little bit with what we do.
I think one thing that you brought up in budget season last year too, Sam, that could be the target of this, is that. We were trying to put some additional maintenance funds in.
Yeah.
And I think those were removed.
Yeah.
That, non-lapsing, you know, I mean, we've, let's face it, we had a flood the first day of school.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, if if something comes up, you have a buffer, it's not just special ed.
Right.
And so those things could happen and if it's, you're not gonna. For, you don't wanna freeze your budget, you'd rather solve the problem with funds that such as that, um it's just another reason that you could, you could.
Alright, is everybody ready to sit? Okay, um I'm in favor of transferring our balance to a non-lapse fund, just say aye. Aye. So that's a full agreement, a little bit more than that, thank you, I think that's right, this is. Okay, can you, you want to throw this financial report?
Yeah, and I alluded to this, this should be pretty quick, um uh you know, the point of this report is just to show you. Where we were and where we are now, uh and we, you know, we talked about a food service program that. Month to month, we were worried about paying our bills, uh and paying our people, and if you just look at the fund balance in eighteen, nineteen and sixteen thousand dollars, like that's, we were under ten. Uh the year before in seventeen, eighteen, we were very nervous about uh maintaining our self-funded status and figuring that out. Now they're over two hundred thousand dollars, so you know, they've got the money in there. Um. This is, this report's a little convoluted, just simply because the cash in, cash out, the reimbursements are really, uh the way they do the reimbursements. They break out the wages and things, they have an inventory cost. Um. I think the big things when you start looking at this report, what did they spend on food? Check this out, seventy three thousand this first year to seventy to eighty one to eighty five to one oh eight to one thirty one. So they're spending the money on food. Um and even after paying for lunches, uh they still. And paid for, you know, more expensive food, they still have a a balance of over two hundred thousand. So what I'd like to do is, is, you know, you, you can ask questions about this, but leave it as is. And let's see what happens in a few months of this new program and come back to this, which is not something typically we would do. I monitor this account on a month-to-month basis basis, but it's kind of been like, why am I doing that right now when they have more two hundred thousand dollars? It's just because I monitor the bills, part of my job, as I sign off on it. But I wanna walk and see if this two twenty three suddenly goes to one eighty in five months. That's something that we're gonna have to keep an eye on, um because long-term C I P would be. A C E P, sorry, would be hard to continue. If we're self-funded. Quite keen about this, I mean, the bottom line is they have a lot of money, they've spent a lot of money on the right things, kids' meals, uh and quality food. And it's still.
I heard them say in the past, they have known that they need. And could certainly use the new equipment and instead with their finances, was making sure children weren't fed without, you know, learning to advance. And that's a whole lot for that group of people. So, yeah. Awesome, and they're still able to have, so what did Stephanie say, she said she was um. She was waiting to see what happened with this new program, right, because she was not sure what the reimbursement was.
Yeah, the reimbursements are so slow, we really probably won't get a good first picture until November. And that's why I say, I wanna see a couple months in a row, because sometimes we get reimbursements that were a little bit higher and some of that were significantly lower. We wanna make sure we see what the re, uh you know, a couple of months of reimbursements look like. Um.
If that's renewed to it.
If we see that it's, we're still in a good shape. I will continue to say to her, like, what's next?
Yeah.
How are you gonna build, what, how are you gonna make this program better now? And we did, we do, we have that conversation a lot.
I like, that's very aware and wise of her and her programs to think that way, so that's very much appreciated. Okay. Um, moving on to thanks for waiting, Gary, we're moving on to item tab, which is new business, uh, A is PTA update, so we have our president with us tonight, hi.
Hey there, it's so good to be back, Carrie Rainville, PTA president here, I'm just giving you guys some updates. First of all, a massive thank you to all of our new and returning PTA members, we are currently at thirty-nine members, fifty percent of which are teachers, so thank you so much, Lisa and Mary Kay for not only promoting but also supporting the PTA. If you or anybody you know would like to join, um, we have membership forms located at both schools um, in the digital backpack and they will also be sent home in backpacks later this week with students. We have so many new and exciting events planned for this coming year, ninety percent of them being in-person community events, which I am just absolutely over the moon about. Um, me being a small-town girl, it's so important, um, for me to get the community together as much as possible. Um, our first event was this past Friday, it was our back-to-school celebration ice cream social. It was absolutely great turnout, um, lots of fun was had by all except for maybe our ice cream scoopers. That was a bit of a workout for them. Thank you for everyone who came out to that and then huge thank you to all of our volunteers who helped out, um, and made that event possible. Again, this year we have Spiritware for Center, Fall and EoSmith, everything right now is thirty percent off through September twenty-fourth, all information is, can be found in the digital backpack and flyers will be going out later this week as well. Last year's second biggest fundraiser will be starting in a few weeks, that is our holiday dessert fundraiser, pies and cookies. Um, all information will be available soon, just wanted to get you guys prepared and start thinking about, um, pies and cookies and those will be distributed right before Thanksgiving, which is absolutely a perfect time, um, for pies and cookie, cookies. And lastly, anyone who is interested, please feel free to join us at our first PTA meeting of the year this Thursday at the Wellington Public Library, six PM. And if anyone ever has questions, please email us at, our email has changed, so it is And thank you guys so much for your time, if anybody has any questions, go ahead and fire them at me.
I don't have any questions, but I do wanna say I went to the ice cream, uh, the ice cream social that PTA held and I've always I've always kind of decried the lack of staff and teacher involvement in PTA events, I noticed it a lot with the winter gala and I was pleasantly surprised at the, at the ice cream social, how many teachers and staff members were involved during there, it was actually really nice seeing the kids get. So I really say thank you to all the teachers and staff that volunteered for that too.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for, um, your input.
In your meetings, Carrie, you're down in the lower level of the library, right, so if people are looking for you, do you have them upstairs?
So the library hasn't given us a designated area, but this, this first meeting will actually be located on the first floor near the children's area, right in, off to the right as you walk in.
Thank you for everything that you're doing, we're super psyched to do this school year with you guys, right beside you. Thank you so much. Okay, um, new business ten B is student performance discussion, which one of our members asked to improve this evening?
That would be me, um, so the reason this is on here, and I know that Phil is going to work on something for us to present in the future and I wanted this to be before that happens because I'm finding that there is a bit of a kind of a conflict between how not, not how students should be evaluated, but how they are evaluated, how their performance is judged, and I think that we, we as a group really need to think about a good way to strike a balance between the two, because I know that there's um, a measurement of growth uh, and as a performance metric, but there's also the measurement of actual performance and I think that they both have merit. And I think that they're both important, but one side or the other will lean to one side or the other as kind of the metric to look at and I don't think that does either side well or does the kids any justice as far as their actual performance, because yes, maybe they underperform on traditional tests, but if they are showing that growth, that is important too, and it's important to be noted and it's important to be essentially due to the people of the town as, as a, as a metric as well, to if there's any stagnation, if there's any improvement. Is it, is it anything that goes down, so I just brought this up here because I wanted everybody to think about if there's a way to maybe strike a balance with this, maybe consider more than one number. I, I don't know what it looks like, but I think it's important to consider. That's why I brought it up here.
Okay, so what would you say is, I heard everything you said, um, so what would you say is your overarching question?
How do we accurate, accurately reflect student performance that would satisfy both a parent's perspective and educator's perspective? Because I think there are two different perspectives.
So like our educators do data-driven teaching, so they take what they learn from assessments and that's how they go forward?
Right, but I think there's an emphasis on, on growth as far as teachers go, but I think there's an emphasis on raw performance because they don't look at the, necessarily look at the growth side. You know what I mean?
Yeah, maybe, um, we can have both groups look at.
And I don't know, get this, so we can.
No, we can, I think we can pull that, and I think, um, I'm just thinking like, I ready, we can do both, uh, S back, we can pull both. I don't know. I think one of the comparisons, one of the things we're moving towards with Dibbles and Maze, with the new program is one of the things that we're looking at is we can easily show us, you know, a number of a, a percentage of students at grade level. And then, you know, how many kids by the end of the year achieve grade level, so it's a bit of growth and the a- actual reporting, because, uh, I understand where you're coming from, I mean, I think that, you know, you see a student grow a hundred and fifty percent in a year, what does that look like, like, a year and a half's growth, right? But they're a third grader and they're still reading at first grade level. We have to take both of those things into consideration, I think that's, we can show all those things. The only thing I say is not every piece of data will allow us to do that. So, but I think we do have some things right now and I don't know enough about the new CKLA assessments to know if that's gonna be something that we'll be able to move forward with, if it's just a number or it's growth, it might just be a number. But I think that's, I think we have that in our reports right now. But I can make sure of that.
I think when we review the, the curriculum, many review the CKLA program, there was a lot you could do, if I remember right, um, speaking with Kristen, there's a lot you could, of like more things you could do to, um, like filters, reduce for the data for that.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, okay, so we know we need to what are the assessments we're using? And what kind of information can they give us and how can parents use it to help them and know whether it is, that's basically probably the question, and how teachers are making their data-driven decisions based on that. Um, I'm wondering if it might be helpful to have these discussions based on age level, grade level, just split it into the two schools maybe because the assessments that some, like the older students do, the younger ones aren't using it, so um, and if we wanna have like community and parent involvement, uh, eighth grade and seventh grade parents don't need to know about like the letter assessment happening in kindergarten and if they're gonna come for something like that, like, let's use their time value in a valuable way, not like make them listen to a bunch of other stuff. So maybe what we actually need is like two different meetings, two different conversations maybe, so that we can make a little bit more specific to the those kids that we're talking about, the age group we're talking about.
Yeah, some of that's.
Does that get harder or easier, like?
Well, some of the data that, like, I mean, you could do a whole night on Dibbles alone. And every category, I mean, it just depends on what you're looking for, if your, your typical things that you've gotten in the past have been S back with I ready and here are the other things that we're, we're looking at, attendance, true and see, things like that, behavior, number of, uh, you know, number of, you know, discipline referrals, things like that, that's data that we have. Tonight, you could say fifty thousand kids
Yeah.
had lunches, like, that's a piece of important data. I think from the standpoint of the new portion, like CKLA, the K-five are kind of in a lump right now, they're, they're together, even though they're different things, and six, seven, eight's a different world.
That's also tricky, because it's our first year with that program.
Right, and those are things though that we've never presented at the board level. So on, we'd have to figure out what that was gonna look like and, because it, the data doesn't exist. The state pulls all of our data except for I ready and the I ready program pulls our data for us and then we just sort it. We map it into a spreadsheet and go, okay. And we have a data present, um, I call it a data date with my admin team, just to sit and go through all of the data together and sort it out, so how do our students that qualify for free um, lunch? How are they performing? How are students that are identified special education, how are they performing? Uh, what's the growth look like, boys versus girls, like, we do all sorts of breakouts to see if there's any trends and then see what we have to address, if there's something we have to address.
So is part of leaving what you're thinking is to, um, teach the families how to interpret scores too?
No, I don't, I don't wanna go into a, a whole thing of you should be looking at it like this. All I wanna do is, well, when you say, you know, teach family, I don't, I don't, I just wanna be like, okay, you know, there, there is concern that the students aren't performing, okay, so if the number, if the test numbers are bad. But you see a lot of positive in the growth numbers, you've got a reason to say, okay, if the growth numbers continue, these students are gonna catch up, it's not gonna be an immediate thing. And that kind of works to both sides. But, you know, if you've got underperforming numbers and you've got not in underperforming growth, or even just a hundred percent growth, which is grade level growth, those numbers never catch up and that's something that needs to be wrote down. So it, it's just one of those things where I think both pieces of data are important and they both serve a purpose and both tell a story and I think that, and myself included get caught up in one side or the other and I wanna try to leave it that way.
When are, um, when are we gonna be able to do this, like, when are confer- I know, when conferences happen? When Thanksgiving week, around Thanksgiving week? So.
Yeah, I was looking at that. We just set our date and date, I think it's the yeah, our date retreat is the twenty-third of September, so that's when my admin team is sitting down to go pull through everything. Part of that process is gonna go, what are the new CKLA assessments? What are the new things we're using for math, like, what do we need to know? Because they, we don't have a program to maintain those things, we, we keep them on a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So, um, but those are things that I expect, like, I think you're talking about two different branches here. The whole kind of district picture is typically viewed by S back and I ready, that's kind of how it's gone. I ready's drifting away and CKLA is moving in. I ready will probably maintain for a period of time for math. But Amplify is also doing a math assessment that might make sense for us to go to as well and I ready may go away there. But those are two things that we typically will present to you as a, as a bigger picture and give you the data and we can say like, look, we were thirty percent last year and we look at our, our same group of kids and they're still at thirty percent. What's going on? And we can try and match up growth, we can look at special ed needs, we can look at a lot of different things. One piece of data. But we need to look at a bunch, Sam's got a handful there.
I'm saying I have a comment, um, just to kind of piggyback off of what Arthur's saying, I think it's interesting. It's an interesting thing to, to take all that into consideration because you know, some standard I guess, it's antiquated to look at that, you know what I mean, to, to gauge performance, um, but certain things like behavior, bullying, all these different things, engagement, you know what I mean, like, though that, what shows true growth, what shows true you know, certain things may not be quantifiable, so I think it's gonna be interesting to figure that out. Certain parents are just gonna look at the test, they're just gonna look at the report cards or the assessments and they're like, okay, you know, what this, or comparisons to other states or comparison to different things, so it's, it's gonna be interesting, um, to figure out what to look at and then how to evaluate the data, but I'm interested in seeing that too, because like Arthur was saying, um, there's different, different forms of growth. So.
I just have a quick thing too, I think from a, from a parent perspective, you know, the parents look at it, how was my kid doing? And the teachers have the answer, the teachers can say, can speak to, your kid was here at the beginning of the year and based on data, based on anecdotal information, you're, the teacher that teaches your kid can have this conversation pretty in-depth with a parent. Sorry. Think from a, from a ten-thousand-foot view, our job is to make sure that the data that is collected that you guys are all doing is, is represented in a way that you're talking about to the other stakeholders, to people that want to move to town, who are looking to, at our school system and wanna know how our kids are doing. And, um, I've thought of other stakeholders, now I can't remember because it's so simple. But just like, there's, there's different conversations for different people and how can we get that, that on-the-ground conversation that teachers can have with parents, how do we translate that to like a more global perspective? I don't know, maybe they have thoughts, like, maybe they know how they could convey that information.
The picture to parents on that curriculum night looks very different than what is presented to you as big picture. And we have to improve both. Uh, especially with all the assessments that would change. Like, the curriculum night is gonna look a lot different. Uh, and it's a little overwhelming to teachers to present on things that they're still learning, um, but that's part of the process.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna land on anything dependent on time, but I just wanted to give everybody something to think about following when this comes around.
When is it coming around? Sometimes I'm asking about.
It's always around, it's just a matter of.
It's like, we're gonna have a conversation about assessments. And, and that's why I was asking about conferences, like, our conversation will be helpful to the public, so is it better that they are on with us and whatever information we talk about that night before they meet with the teachers? Or better to know how your student's doing and then you're like, wait, what did the board, did they discuss and how does that work?
I don't think it's gonna matter.
Doesn't matter.
You know, because you've already made those decisions around curriculum. And so we just have to make sure we provide a consistent message across each of the grades. And then, and what are those assessments, what are the things we're looking at? And then when they have the, because curriculum night is different than the conferences, and when you get to conferences, making sure you're matching, when you talk about curriculum night, hey, your child is in second grade and they are performing at a third grade level on this but on this standard or this piece, they're performing at a first grade, like, we need to be in that.
And then here's what I'm doing about this.
Yes, exactly.
Right, yeah.
Then here's how you can help this work together.
That's a hundred percent right, yeah.
Okay, so we don't know still. We're gonna have this fun assessment party, well, we wish just, it's gonna be a surprise, I guess. Because why, like, why, what is, what is our holdup? We just can't get together, we're busy?
The, the data party, you mean for us?
Yeah, we have a day-to-date party.
I also want to get a little talk.
So do you have all the results from S back and all that?
So they just, they just recently released everything, yes. So they kept them, I think till the last week of August, they finally finalized all their reports. And so they're just starting to do their presentations out now.
Okay.
But they, they did their public press release, but they don't dig into anything for town by town. And so they changed, they updated their reports. But we have to go through it.
Okay, so you're, you're waiting until you, your administrative staff has to go through it.
Go through it and.
They have to. It's one assessment.
Yeah.
But it's something that they, we dig to, through together. So we can break out and look at trends, and when someone says, hey, can you look at this, what are we, what thoughts on this? Cause we compare. You know, is it girls versus boys in a grade, is it boys versus girls in a school, is it? All those different categories, you can break them down by.
So you want to do that for S back and I ready, and then you're ready to present to the.
Yes, yeah, yeah, because, and we can also, I mean, we compared a thousand different ways. We also wanna know how, how they perform in I ready, did it match what they did in, in S back? How were their curriculum assessments, did it match all, like, we go through those things, was that a surprise? No, okay. Was that a surprise? Yes, why? We go kid, and that's a fact of it being small, we go kid by kid.
And but you don't wanna wait till we're into budget season, right?
I don't think it's, it doesn't matter.
So come on again.
I don't think that, oh, you're just saying time wise?
Yeah, time wise, when.
Honestly, I, I was trying to get through my surgery, to be honest with you. And it started school, um, and so, and, and the, the rusty piece, so we're a little pushed off on rusty now, Q A and M. Um, but I feel good about that, I do think we're gonna be able to, um. Let me just say, we have our presentation, for the most part, what we've used in prior years, pretty consistent, we have numbers put into it already. What we don't have is looking at specific trends and getting into the nitty gritty, which is probably more the most important piece of it. Yes, that's what we spend our day on. So I will, I do think we'll be able to turn around pretty quick. That just might mean you go October seventh, October eighth, October ninth. It is a separate, it is a separate meeting.
Yeah, for Chicago, it could be rest days, maybe moving into November.
Well, he's only got one presentation, but it's, you know. Yeah, it's, it's on my radar, it's important, I wanna make sure we, we, my admin team has the time to go through all of those trends. So who can we present, we can share everybody.
If you find that you have basic information from the most recent S back results, can you send it to us? With our agreement and understanding that we remain, I'm not know what the heck it is.
Yeah, you can probably go to EdSite Public right now, and you can type in Wellington. It just sometimes it doesn't, it shows kids that are, we get reported on, and they're in a magnet school, you will know that.
Yes, so we'll have to understand this.
So, you know, if there's three kids in one grade level that are out placed, and two kids are, two additional kids are magnets. Five kids underperforming or overperforming, might not be representative of what's happening in your two buildings, if that makes sense. When you have a class of thirty.
Right, okay, we all agreed, we understand, we get it, okay. Super, hey, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a data date, that's what I heard. I will be, wow, we're still going, okay, cool. Um, item ten, new business, we are up to section C, cell phone policy discussion, um. There's a lot to discuss and say about that, so our board put forth the policy regarding, um, personal devices and. Uh, Mr. Stevens released a letter with more of a thank yous, and also some dates about when that was discussed by our. Our policy committee as well as our board. Um, and we had some parent response, so we wanted to comment it to address that.
And I can give you just a little bit of data from what I have gathered, um, and just so you know how I responded, so. Um, I don't typically respond to Facebook things, but there was a lot of comments on this on Facebook, uh, when the survey came out. Uh, petition came out, and so I basically went comment by comment at the time and answered questions, and that's where a lot of the FAQ came from. And then the information from yonder, uh, and obviously your discussions, knowing that this was not just on one meeting, I think that was important. So that was pushed out to, to all the families, uh, and you as well. Uh, the second thing is, uh, you have also now have access to the feedback. I don't know why. But we're like under ten pieces of feedback. To you and to myself. To say that's not a lot is an understatement. Um, and the feedback that came in was balanced, there were probably half saying. Thank you so much for doing this, we really support it, and half saying, uh, we, and maybe it's not even half. Uh, there was a portion that support the concept. But didn't want the under pouch, if that makes sense. So, um, and that may be, I, I know, uh, some of the folks that I talked to. Said, look, I don't support the under pouch, but I a hundred percent support limiting cellphone access. Um, and so part of my explanation out to the public was for people to understand it's not just about classrooms. The number of things, referrals that we were dealing with, and time it takes for teachers, in between classes to write referrals. To do all those things in the cafeteria. Piece of data that I will give you, I didn't get the number today, but as of, uh, the end of last week, we had confiscated four phones. The kids have been great so far, uh. Honey moon period, I can't tell you that, all I can tell you is that's about where it's at, uh, and so that's been a positive. Um, the last piece that I will, uh. Talk about petition is, I'm a little bit of a data guy, and I, I took, uh, the, the data that I got from the petition that you also got. Uh, we went through Power School and we tried to match up people. So, this is raw, it might not be complete, but this is what came out of it, so out of the hundred and eleven, um. Responses that they received. There was, uh, only one repeat, so not gonna down to a hundred and ten, right? Uh, of the hundred and ten responses, fourteen were from students that I could tell. If someone wrote, uh, and there were four people that wrote, uh, their name as I D O M W F. Uh, those are unknown, that could be a student, but I don't know, I can't identify that person, okay? So, uh, there were fourteen students that responded to that. And then I, we were able to identify thirty-three parents. And some of them maybe have come out of the same household, a husband, a wife, husband, husband, whatever it was, but thirty-three parents. The remainder of the people. Without, if, being a private detective, um. There were, there were forty-three for me that unknown, um, and you know, some that were like Seattle, Washington, and. You know, we throw that name into, see if they were a contact for a student, we did all that work for all of these students. We don't know where they came from, so we also went through the tax GIS. So we put their last name in, if it was listed, do they have property or something in town? If they weren't listed, they became an unknown. So I tell you, like, we did a little bit of research with a hundred and eleven pieces that were there. Um, I'm not discounting that feedback, all I'm telling you is. That's what I know about those folks, um, and, and what came back, so from the standpoint of. I'm glad that we got some feedback, and then, you know, from the standpoint of people, you've been saying all along, like, we would love to hear from you. This is a way that people came across and said. This is what we think, we'd like to consider, I don't know what their all feedback was specifically, if they. Didn't like Yonder at all, or didn't like the cellphone restriction at all, but that's the data I have, so the survey was one. Um, piece, the feedback that you've gotten in a folder, which is balanced, um, was another. My phone's not been ringing off the hook.
Do we, I should know this, uh, do we have the pouches?
So, they're order, they're on order, we had our, um. Breakout meeting, I don't remember what they call it, we had our, our, our meeting, you, they won't allow you to order them until you have your plan. Um, because they make sure that you have thought through your rules and your routines, and how you're going to implement, and what your rollout's gonna be. Uh, they won't let you order until you do that. Um, so. I think they want it to be successful.
Yeah.
Uh, because their business relies on it, right? Um, so I have not had a pouch in hand yet, I, I don't know when they're arriving, I don't have that information yet. All I can tell you is, there is a purchase order, and they have been ordered beyond that. Uh, you get to determine if you wanna change paths.
Do you have any idea of the delivery time, you know?
So, uh, we have an expectation that we could. Yes, I, I think they'll be here within two weeks. And what we were planning on doing was, within two weeks, when we get them, we would label everything. We would do ID cards into every pouch, and, uh, we would do trainings for kids. And that would be the, the, would put us into a rollout around the first of October, around.
Okay, so I am wondering. If, what I, what I, okay, so that's a lot of data about the signatures on the petition. If one person asks another question, it's important to take their valuable thoughts and help them understand. And from looking at the petition and some other emails and things, I think people are asking for time to catch up. So. If we're a little bit held back with the product being delivered, and we're have. Community members asking for a little bit of time to catch up, we do have this next meeting on October eighth, so. That would give people a little bit of time to do the catching up, have the conversations, call you. Email the board, whatever, we can go through it one more time on the eighth, that Tuesday there, and then maybe launch it after that.
Can't, but you have to, we have to design a policy that's gonna be the board, that's gonna be the first read, that has to be that, so if you wait till the October, you're early, it's you're gonna be able to do it. If there's not a policy in hand for the board, I mean, October, the earliest it's gonna come through is December.
We can do the policy and not what's.
You don't need a policy.
You know, we're not gonna have a policy.
You're gonna have a policy, but you don't need a, Manchester doesn't have a pol, a Board of Education policy. It's a policy that has come through their student handbooks, is how, how it's implemented.
We have, we have a personal device use policy out in books now, though, and I, I don't like.
Could adjust it, yes.
Yeah, I don't like conflicting the handbook with beyond the books policy, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you want like a, no.
I like the, I, I like the personal use, no, the per, we can change the personal, personal, we're trying to just, I'll say, uh, change it, you know, add the.
Policy kind of, to adjust that, then does the board have to approve the change to it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, when you change the board policy, you'd have to have a first read, the secondary.
Committee meets, figures out the proper wording for it on the eighth weekend, if everyone's in agreement, approves the new wording of the.
First read, it won't be approved till November.
Really?
Is that include, are you talking about updating the policy to with the yonder pouches?
Yes.
If you don't need, like, parents are, wanna be very specific about that, I think. It's in the handbooks?
Hmm.
That's enough?
I mean, I'm concerned if we put in our policy and it doesn't. Like, that really ties our hands, um, if this is something that we're gonna use. And try and. I mean, I guess we could always change it next year.
You couldn't change it anytime, the policy is gonna live and change and change. I hear what you're saying now, too.
That we should try it out and see if it's successful, to then change the policy.
I like that idea of trying out, and that's kinda how I've been looking at it too. When I wear my parent hat, there's a lot about me that is like, no, I don't wanna do that. But after being on the community and discussions we've both had and research we've done, I understand it, and. So even with my parent hat on. If we all, if people think it's good for the student body, the community, then I will give it a try, so like, that would try, that's how I'm looking at it, like, let's try it. Let's just try it and see how it goes, so maybe that's part of. Like, make, you want it to be a card that's in the.
I want it to be the policy only because I don't want the policy and the handbook to conflict each other, I, I don't want there to be. Any kind of essentially.
Yeah.
Because, very, you could very easily, you're, you could have a parent very easily, so you have this in the handbook, but you don't have it in the policy, you should be following the policy.
What does the policy specifically say?
I don't have it all there, but it's, it doesn't even, it doesn't reference, so, it just references. These are up to teacher discretion, basically, the biggest point of contention in that policy. It's an argument I've been having for a year, so, yeah.
So what, so. No, does it still change?
I didn't really think anything.
So your policy for, for policies, I think. Says local policies may be adopted or amended by a majority of the board at any regular or special meeting. Provided the board members have advanced written notice of a proposed change that has been placed on the agenda for such meeting. I mean, I'm just going through, I'll be your policy real quick, I, I do think there's someplace where it says first and second read, but I'm not sure where that is.
I don't personally, as a policy member, policy committee member, I don't think it's personally fair to give. The full board something like a week in advance, and then say, hey, we're gonna vote on this, I'd rather give everybody amongst two, what was ordered, you know, because I don't, I don't think. That three policies that the main members are, yeah, don't be on, so I'd rather give everybody plenty of time to read it.
If, yes, maybe that's something to ask the group, this, if they think I would need that kind of time.
I, I'm not, I'm not wavering on this, I was thinking about the point of the pouches, and I think one thing that doesn't get brought up. Is when the phone is put into a pouch, dude. It takes away a bit of the temptation for these kids to try to sneak something out and be like, oh, maybe I can get it out and not get caught, oh, I can, I can. Take it in my backpack, in my pocket, get out into the hallway and, you know, get on my phone there, and. Putting it, putting it in a pouch, it mediates a, a lot of that temptation, and a lot of the tension for. Trying to get, someone's getting into trouble just to look at your phone for five seconds. The other thing, if I did, I read some of the feedback, and I did watch the video of how to open the yonder pouches, and a lot of those methods were very loud. And they were very much being caught by a teacher who was paying any sort of attention if he were, because a lot involves slamming it against the desk, or prying at it with a pen, and it's all very loud. Very loud stuff.
The yada rollup actually recommends spot checks. For damage or tampering, things like that, they actually recommend that in their, their rollup. I think for you, the thing that you need to determine as a board is looking at the feedback that you've gotten. You do have time if you wanted to do your policy in that manner, um. Is, are you going to change, consider changing anything? So I think the feedback that I have seen from folks doesn't necessarily mean they're not supporting doing away with cell phones. Uh, sorry, doing away, they're supporting doing away with cell phones, but not necessarily through yonder pouches. Um, and some of the comments were like, hey, somebody gets written up for their cellphone twice, they have to use the yonder pouch, you could consider. Something like that. That's up to you, um, you know, I, I have some reservations about some of the. Ideas and, uh, the management for our staff and what they have to do to manage. Those things, it's just adding work to that. Um, but you have to fact determine as a board, is there, you know, some area where you'd like to expand a little bit to?
I think there needs to be a period of time for catch up.
What does that mean? Just for people to wrap their, wrap mine around?
I think that they didn't, they didn't know, I think people didn't know this was on the table. And can't fault people for not participating or not being aware, because lives are busy, we get it, and we can only do so much to encourage their participation. And try to let people know what we're talking about and what we're deciding about, so I think that's what was being asked, is for time. For people to ask their questions and have more discussion. And for me too, like that point about, um, just use the pouches for the folks who are repeat offenders on their phones now. I think it's a culture change in the building, like, we're changing the culture and putting our mental health and communication above. Um. Those devices and the things they bring into our, our world, so, like, as a group, let's try and.
Uh, I, I guess my question is a discussion or, or questions. What we haven't got?
Right.
So, I, I, where I struggle, and I, I, when I taught, when I was a principal, and I did kindergarten orientation, I would say to every parent in the room. You could either put it on Facebook. Or you could go to the source and ask it, like, and find out. There were two hundred and fifty comments or something like that crazy on Facebook. We got under, I didn't get, like, people like, oh, he must be getting, uh, you know, burned with phone calls. No, I talked to one person on the phone, one. So if we're going to allow more time to catch up, is it just going to be the next board meeting, you're going to talk about the. Is it just going to be the next board meeting, you're going to talk about the policy or? Do I need to do a Q and A with people or something? Because they're not asking questions, they're not, it that doesn't exist.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't.
They filled up the survey.
Yeah, there were opportunities, we've made a decision, so there's that. But I think that for a part is to care, care enough, and I think that's what they're asking for is time.
Is that at the board meeting though? That's that's what I'm asking, do I need to look to do something?
Haven't just yet, and we have an October date of a meeting. Then that seems like a good time to me anyway to offer, put it on our agenda again. Give people time to study, ask their questions, call you, whatever, we'll talk about it one more time at that October meeting, that'll be ready to proceed, I assume. John?
I would like to keep moving forward, I have more people in favor of this than not wanting it, um. I think bringing it up on the next board meeting is a great idea, having one final conversation about it. And then Bill could move forward, cause he should have the pouches by then, he should be. Have a plan with his team and implement it. That way, if any other parents want to speak up, they have an opportunity and then jump right after that if we don't.
Are we ever allowed to have a Q and A during a board meeting? So could we have an interaction? So that people could ask questions if they have a question.
You set that up. As a board, you have to vote on it, you have to agree on it.
Okay.
You set your um, your. Data meeting that way.
In that way, people would have an opportunity to. Have their question same.
Yeah, you just have to remember if you're other business, you know, are you, or do you put a time limit on it, what does that look like?
I know, sorry. Oh, um, this is not a Wellington issue necessarily, it's a, I mean, the state of Connecticut has. Come down on cell phone use in schools, it's like. So, so us. Taking this. As a board and and taking this all around. And. Thinking that this way to proceed is the best for our students. Our staff, our learning environment, like that's. For me, anyway, that's our job, like. There's obvious amounts of data that indicate that cell phone use is is not good for our kids. And cell phone use in school is not good for our kids. And as. Um, a person who. Is one of many people responsible for the environment and the culture. I I think that. This is where we landed and this is where we should stay. I I'm all for having conversations with folks, I think that the conversation is. Can be had simultaneously with. Proceeding with what we agreed to do or we decided to do or whatever. What language you wanna use.
So I'm not gonna, I don't mean to cut you off, that's a really good transition to what I was gonna suggest. Is it reasonable? To have an updated policy? Towards the end of September. That we could look at quick and agree to pass law to the full board, so that will give. That would give community members and the full board a chance to look at it in October. Give it an entire month of October to review it, cause now that it's, it's a public document, it would be on the agenda. But it's not a finalized document. And then any last concerns could be brought up in November, then the final vote would go through. So that way, we're moving simultaneously while soliciting the opportunity for feedback. Because you get, you basically given the community two more months to look at it and say, for a month and a half. Look at it and say, well, this is. This is how we're moving forward, this is what the policy would look like. And bring your comments, concerns to either the October or November eighth.
Could we stay on our implementation plan at the same time? With that October first beginning date?
That's up to you.
Is that the date you were shooting for? Which is before the October eighth, I mean, I've been into the board going October first, but I know. One more person on the board.
I wouldn't wanna go much past the. First part of October because rules, routines and expectations are all being taught and you can wait much longer. You're gonna probably have more student pushback.
Well, and this is why I guess where my question is, is are you listening to feedback for not doing the auto pouches? Or are you listening to feedback for doing yonder pouches in a different manner? If you were saying, hey, we'd love to hear your feedback, and I'd love to hear feedback. I had, you know, the one phone call I had, we had a really good conversation, we talked for about forty minutes and it was like. Could it be done a different way? So. I I think there's pros and cons to everything, but that's stuff that if they wanna, you wanna consider that. If you don't wanna consider that and you're just gonna say, look, if we have made a decision removing younger pouches, then what are you waiting for?
A simple answer to that question. Of using the pouches from start to finish in the day is because we're having difficulty during transition time. That's what the yonder pouch solves, that's the problem it solves. If you're gonna use the little shoe slots or the boxes or whatever, the student is still carrying it in the hallway. And we have seen. Productions, whatever, things that students have made that are happening in those transition tires. And that's part of what we're trying to eliminate, not only is it inappropriate, but it's making. Other children. Feel fully self-conscious about what they're doing, because imagine going through your day knowing that someone could be lurking behind, like videoing you or whatever. And posting it in some kind of a way, that's the kind of thing we're trying to avoid, trying to make everyone feel comfortable and safe in their environment. We're trying to agree to put the mental health and not having the phone addiction. And I said before, like, the teachers need to also model that. That's really important part. And um, those are some of the things like that we talked about that came up during our our meetings. But I think. That's not, hasn't been conveyed for yet, or you know what I mean? I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent right. Could we possibly like hear people out and decide, okay, wait, maybe we're. Gone a different route, let's see what we can do to change things. I don't add this point, perceive my stance on this changing right now because my mindset is let's try it. But um. Just letting the talk happen, you know, and I think a lot of it too comes from fear. I read, you know, I need my child to have their phone in case there's an emergency at the school, I understand that. There was a time when my mom. Couldn't get a call from me if I was having an emergency and I have a child in the school, and now that we're so used to it. That's scary for parents to get that up at, it puts a lot more trust in the district, in the staff. And the children that are around your child, I get that. So some of it really comes from le- legit like fear of losing that connection to your kid, and I get that. And that's something that makes me uncomfortable with it too, honestly. But like I said, I'm willing to try it in the interest of what's best for our kids and helping our culture. A focus on learning and feeling confident.
It makes some not very. Happy people, I feel like. Our. My, I feel like my job is to, like I just said, talk about the culture and the environment. And and what we provide in the school. I feel bad that parents feel bad about it, I I do, like, I'm sorry that that happens. But our charge, I feel like our charge is to. Hmm, to do this, like. To to provide an environment that's technology, cell phone free, so that they can engage in learning. And as Arthur was saying, they don't have that temptation for five seconds to check their phone and. Then have this angst about what happened and not be able to address it, like the, that's done, that's gone. And. Like, there's ways that that. We can, not be probably, we wouldn't be on that level, but that the schools can assure parents that there's ways to communicate with their kids. It takes one time for a parent to call the school and have their communication addressed to. Allay that fear. Or not alleviate, but lay it, like. It's, it's frustrating. Because this is what, I feel like this is what needs to happen, and then we get bogged down in, well, we should just have one more conversation about it. Like. If we go forward with this. Like. I don't wanna be that person, but what's the worst case scenario? Like, we've agreed, we've talked, someone could watch this meeting tonight and have a conversation about all the stuff that we talked about. So there's this meeting, there's. Weeks till our next meeting, like. I'm just not sure what. The is what that. Why we need to do.
To me, the difference is our response to what. We have seen and been shown by even one family, by two families. It's just, we, you're right, we could just say, yeah, this is what we're doing, we get that you're worried about it, sorry.
Well, I don't want that to be.
No, I know, okay, no, listen. But you know what I mean? I think that's the difference to me, is giving some time to respond.
I think I have an idea about that, so I think it's really important how this is communicated to the parents. So, so you were think, were you thinking of a letter or a?
I've already done one.
The letter in that. So that should take care of some of the concerns that people that were asking questions might have.
That was my thought about why I didn't get it launched, because we sent that intentionally.
Okay, sorry.
What was the date of that letter though, can you tell me? Cause I could go on my phone and.
Yep.
That's how like the students do right now.
August twenty ninth.
August twenty nine.
August twenty ninth. HMS Cell Phone Informational Handout. Times that it was discussed, the survey results, and then an FAQ that was basically. Um. Old from the questions on.
And will there be one more letter just before it begins so that the parents are aware?
For sure, like, yeah, we're gonna lay out the procedural, you know, we would lay out procedural piece, what this is what you can expect. Um, there's. This, there's a training videos that the staff goes through, there's training videos actually for kids they would do in their homerooms. That's part of our rollout, that's already established that we would do that. Um, there's times for them to go and actually experience locking and unlocking their phone with the magnet bases, they would go on a tour. To go do that, like, those things are built into our rollout. Uh, and that was what was anticipated to happen the last week of September.
Okay.
Into the, okay, when you walk in this Monday. It's it's go time.
See, and I think that might make people who have questions feel, you know, a little, should answer some most questions and.
I think the more the questions were. Does my chat really need to use this? I think that was more of a question.
My answer would be, we're hoping, because we're trying to establish a culture and our community needs to work together to meet that. That would be my response.
For me, a lot of the questions were, why aren't we using the Cubbies? And you've answered that question very well, um, well, how are we affording this? Grant money, why are we using this money for this grant? Uh, or why are we using this grant for that? Um, State is recommending that we move towards this. The only thing we haven't answered, I saw in one of the um, folders you shared was if a parent just says, no, my student's not doing this. How is the, your staff gonna handle that?
Turns to discipline related.
Okay.
It's a school policy, you have to follow it.
The phone would just have to be. Not, not seen.
No, it ha- it goes into the pouch and if they're caught with their phone out, it goes to the office.
And parent has to pick it up.
And the parent has to pick it up.
And should there be so many tiny that that parent picks it up before?
Correct.
There's a better consequence. Yeah.
You know, I don't wanna get into a a a match here, but. This has gone through the attorney, you have the right as a board of education to say, you may not bring. Or have a. Cell phone in your possession in school, you have the right as a board of education to do that.
Like, that's the disciplinary side of it too, but again, like, talking about us as a community agreeing to. Try it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's kind of like the positive spin to put there.
Yeah, and I think we tried to answer all their questions that they've reached out to us about with this meeting. And we, I think we should move forward for Bill's date, if he's ready on that date, we talk about it again on the eighth, and see how it's going. And then. On that, we can have the first read of the policy at the same time. Well, here's, here's the other thing. That I'll say is, I'm probably a bit more rigid on how I think the rules of these things should go, but I'm just one person. If nobody else wants to change the policy and you wanna keep it in the handbook. Then that's, that's the six V one, and that's, I'm fine with, like.
I.
That would be deal.
I think we we have to change.
Your policy should be. I don't know that it should say yonder pouches, but it should be.
Yeah, we don't want to use it.
Is enough to start?
Yeah, I don't disagree that we should start on October first, that was the date, I think we should go, I I'm just a firm believer in that policy should reflect, but. If I was the only one. If we just board it up, I would say.
I think it's just gonna have a battle holding on the the start date.
Oh, I was, I was, okay, I was never trying to hold up the start.
Your policy could be broad enough that it lays down the. The law and your administrative reg, which is the same thing as handbook. Could be specific and you can change, you know what? It's, the kids have a better idea and you wanna make a change, you make their recommendation and. You you change your administrative reg, it doesn't impact your policy. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so we still can't say October one though, because we don't know if we'll have the product in the end.
I do think you'll have it.
Can you do the trainings and stuff without having the patches?
We won't do it without them, no, but we we were, she could see the the shipping dates. And she let us know when, she would notify us when they were shipped. And she said, oh, I think your your roll out date would be fine, if I'm off, I'm off a week. You know, I'm not off a lot, a long time. And. Once we get them in, then we'll say, okay, they're in. This is our plan for rollout, this is when students will be trained, this is when the first day of, uh, you know, this is when it will be assigned. This is when, you know, when they walk in, the first day that will be expected.
Can you um, bring one to, if you have everything, can you bring one to our meeting?
Oh, yeah.
And is it possible to bring a magnet, I don't know how.
Yes, we have one mobile magnet that we ordered.
I think that would be really helpful, and even at um, like hard field nights or whatever other. Um, school events that might give parents some. If some just might be curious and others might wanna know, like, the tiny. Consuming part of it.
If a student breaks or cuts open their yonder pouch. And the parent has to pay for the first replacement or the second replacement?
Well, the price.
We did fifteen dollars the first one, the the district eats the fifteen dollars.
You give the divi- the replacement yonder before the money is collected, or are you holding?
We work with families.
Okay.
But the phone goes to the office, is that very?
If there's no pouch, it's in the office. All done.
We can practice it at our next meeting.
Yeah. Not if it goes for four hours.
Again, I will say our. Our students have been outstanding so far.
I'll stack feedback on it.
Outstanding. I will. I will tell you that, you know, I have cameras in my office and I I. Watch to see how things are going, I can see routines. I have seen kids talking to each other in cafeteria. And you could just watch a twenty minute lunch, kids are not trying to sneak their phones, they're talking to each other. It is. Noticeably different. Noticeably.
Culture, that's. Us having community culture, a learning space that is great intention culture.
Good, but just, what do we land on? So we landed on, you're studying implement for October first, and what do we land on as far as policy?
Oh, I think we'll get a policy, so we kinda said, let's have the meeting tonight, cause I didn't want to have a policy meeting if the ship was gonna turn. But we can, you know, if you're you're in favor of that, we can get a policy meeting pretty quick. I'm hoping for me, I'm not. Like doubt about.
When you're better, when you're better.
I'm like, three days, come on.
No, no, you can make it up a little bit than that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely, we can do it quick, and I, and there are quite a lot of policies already written that we could just. Look at and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, that's um, something that's really affecting our families right now, and I think it was super important that we take that time, we talk about it. And again, really awesome that we had some students input. Okay, um, we are ready to look at the regular minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Yes, I wanna make a motion that the Board of Education approves the regular meeting minutes from the August thirteen, twenty twenty four. Uh, August thirteen, twenty twenty four, as well as the policy committee meeting minutes from July thirty of twenty twenty. Second.
Does anybody have changes? I got one.
You'll have another new person doing starting minutes next month, so you'll know this, there's a difference.
On the board policy, many minutes from July thirtieth on page five. It says that I. Suggested we move the president's seat policy to the next meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. I was just trying to, um, someone had brought it up and I was just trying to suggest that we put it on the next agenda, because it keeps coming up. And we, we know it's something we need to address, so I just wanna clarify, it was not on the agenda, and I was like, let's move that along. I instead was like, let's make sure, that's your fault. Did anybody else have anything? Well, all right, if everybody is ready to agree to the. Previously stated motion, please. So we have approved the regular meeting minutes of August thirteenth and the policy. From July thirtieth, thank you. All right, we are. From July thirtieth, thank you. All right, we are on old business item eleven, policy five one four one point two one three. How do you say that?
I make a motion that the Wellington Board of Education approve policy number five one four one dot two one three, the administration of Galaxo.
Second. Is there any necessary? Discussion further?
The nurses love it. They said this is great and uh, they already have a form that they want in their administrative reg if it's ever used.
Thank you for my hard work on that. And uh, if you're in favor of approving that policy, please say so now.
Bye. Bye.
I'm gonna stand for none.
Are you? Okay, so go Tracy.
You don't need to, everybody's here.
All right, awesome, thank you. Okay, we'll pass that on through, thank you. We are item twelve, present to speak and diet void is still away from. We hardly are.
Let me.
That's us, that's you.
They get the option of the limited.
I guess. Hello, it's present to speak time. You're just going back from the bathroom.
You have the ability to unmute if you want to speak.
Brushing your teeth, hey buddy? What's happening on the debate? You don't know, cause, okay. Cool. Hi. Yeah, gonna see. Okay, cool. Okay, item thirteen, board comment. I'm gonna be super fast because I think I'm all done, okay. The um. I hope you're reviewing these cave uh, documents, but the next new board member leadership conference is held on Wednesday, December fourth from eight to five. It's a Wednesday during the day, which is a little tricky. It's at the Sharon Hartford, um, Sound Hotel in Rocky. Also, if you are new in any kind of way or wanted to put that the leadership conference, it's available. I would offer. Oh, with someone who's interested in going, but I really cannot. Get the ones straight on there.
Do you get emails in the mail?
Yeah.
Let me get you.
Um, okay.
You do get the emails?
I get emails and I get regular.
Regular mail, oh. Well, I'll save them for now and you can.
So, are they typing the November?
Yes, they are.
We're sitting here.
Okay. And the K C A P S convention, we have November fifteenth and sixteenth is going to be at. The table reservation at the Mystic Marriott. So it must be done. I thought it was at the hotel. Anyway, it's a two day event. You don't have to go to all of the things. There's different um, workshops available. Some of the topics they'll be representing include. Safe schools, um, A I. Special education, Title IX, student voice, student achievement, that's good. Policy. Career pathways, legislative issues and so on. So we have a little bit of choice about what you go to and how much you um. Wanna participate in. And Phil said they already have a couple of like reservation spots because we're hoping some people can go. So I guess we need to tell Brenda by a certain date because.
Brenda. Yep. I go on Fridays. And the programming on Fridays is is typically good.
Why do you think Brenda needs to know that?
Um, we can adjust pretty quickly. Their K is pretty flexible.
I know, but there's gotta be like a last date, right, to French, oh, we are.
We already have pre-registered because it's cheaper.
Alright, so.
Make one up.
Email Brenda if you're interested in attending or if you wanna know more about it. Um, you have more information about like what's happening one day.
As soon as possible. Uh.
Or the list more specifically, right? I think one time. We got like the email that said this.
Yeah, they might not have the program yet.
Not just yet, yeah.
I can ask Lisa Sider or she has the program now.
And if you wanna make us super fun night of it, you can stay at the Mystic Marriott Hotel for a wonderful rate above the three sixty five thousand dollars per night because you're part of this very, very spectacular.
I can ask that.
Yeah, if you need that again. While we, it's next to. Okay, I mean, thanks. Except you guys are awesome. Thank you for bearing with us. Does anybody else feel like there was so long to do comment to me?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, well, since somebody else has said it, we're in a brand new school year. We have to have high hopes for the new school year. We have to. Hope we do our students do well and show performance. I actually have um, a lot of hope for us going into this year um, for some very positive changes that we push forward. And just as someone who is also on the board of education for the high school and just came back, went to our complaining session about our changes to the. Dress code up there and the grading policies. Coming down here with changes to the cell phone policy. Change is difficult, change is scary, but a lot of times change is necessary.
Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Great, okay. Oh, please come on. I just wanna say thank you to the um, the wonderful um, cafeteria folks for this. We was and the awesomeness, that was it.
And for the wonderful trees.
Okay, we're ready for a motion to get one of your. Need to.
Motion, John.
That time thirty seven.
John, who made the second? There you go. Alright. Jan made the motion, John made the second. You need a vote.
Oh, we're.
Ten thirty seven P M.